Okay, we're gonna call the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee meeting for January 23rd to order.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. On behalf of the Regional District School Committee, and I just wanted to make note of the passing of a true public servant from the town of Millville, Mr. John J. Malali, who is Aaron's father, served the town of Millville with distinction for over nearly fifty years, forty-eight years, twenty-eight of them as the chief of the fire department. He was called home a little over a week ago. We just want to take a moment to reflect and think of Chief Malali.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Introduction of members.
Steve Trigalli from Millville.
Mike Buckley, Blackstone.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Irene Pernak, Millville.
Dr. Perry Davis, Superintendent of Schools.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone. Since the students are not here, we'll pause that. We'll open with a public form. Anyone from the public wish to come up? Okay. Moving on, Consent Agenda A, which are the warrants, use of school facilities, field trip requests, and minutes of the meeting of January ninth.
I would approve Consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Ms. Robyn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, somebody say an aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? In unanimous. We'll move to the report of the superintendent.
The first item on your agenda tonight is the FY-15 budget presentation. Joining me this evening is Mr. Dudak, the principal of the high school, and Mr. Cameron, principal of the middle school, and I will invite them up to the table and I will be joining them. I put a memo on how I hope this presentation will go and want to certainly accommodate any questions the school committee has. In your packet or in your attachment was a copy of the line item budget for each school with the information, but we are going to take you through a PowerPoint of looking at the overview of the budget and then spending some time with Mr. Dudak, talking about the high school, talking about vision, and where do we see the future going for the high school, and then Mr. Cameron as well, we'll talk about the middle school. So I want to kind of frame that we're gonna kind of talk conceptually at the beginning, and we certainly then want to take advantage of Mr. Dudak and Mr. Cameron being here. If you've looked at anything in the line item budget that you have questions about, we certainly want to go back and deal with that. So we're kind of taking a bigger look, and then they're here tonight to deal with it. A couple of things I just want to say, as I've mentioned many times. We have built this budget around your vision, mission, core values, and the items that were set forth by the subcommittee working with the finance committees in both towns. I do not develop wish list budgets. The direction to the administrators has been very clear. Tell me what you see as the student learning needs, and we're gonna talk about that. You're also gonna hear a word tonight quite a bit, commitment. What are we committed to going forward? Not maintaining, but what are we committed to going forward with? And it's very important for kind of people to see and hear from your two principals that are here this evening to kind of take an overview to that in terms of what they see and what programs and our personnel need to address, because there's a lot more to the budget than just the line items. It's really understanding at the core, what do these two principals see for their schools, and see that going forward as we deal with it. So there's quite a bit of information, and I'll join the administrators. You do have, we had a snow day, so we didn't get this to you electronically, but I did. Mr. Cameron, we worked on the PowerPoint slides this afternoon, and so you do have a hard copy, and I would suggest if you have any questions, and if I can, Mr. Cameron, making the presentation, by all means, you know, any members of the committee, you know, would certainly indicate, you know, stop and clarify and go over. All right? So let me join Mr. Dudak and Mr. Cameron. We are a team, and therefore we will address you this way.
This is not a recording device. Jesse gave it to me to keep the iPad charged. It felt like I had to disclose that.
So where are you keeping your recording devices, then?
That's another conversation.
So you have the screens, and we'll start with the overview. Again, I'm not, I've got the first several slides, you got them in advance of the meeting, but I just want to again remind the committee, and more importantly, to share with the general public, how did we go about looking at this budget? What were some of the things that really drove the administrators in their direction? And basically, much of that came from school committee in terms of looking at your strategic plan. So if I can have Mr. Cameron run his little iPad, you know, this is your vision, this is your vision for the school district, which applies to all the buildings and programs in the district, and those were, you know, clearly a part of our thinking as an administrative team as we looked at developing the budget. The next slide is just a recap of your core values. And it's important when we talk about budget to talk about core values, because our core values should really represent the kind of non-negotiables. And when we're talking about the budget, we look upon these as kind of our non-negotiables. These are the things that we're committed to. It doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna be able to get it all, and the tough decisions will happen as we go deeper into the budget, there's no question, but I don't think anybody should ever question why are we doing it, why are we recommending it, and why are we committed to it. We may have to face the compromise situation, we may not be able to do all of this, and we recognize that. The next slide is the overview that the school committee members adopted and shared and have had conversations with. One of the clearest things that we are trying to do is balance the transparency of the budget process so that people understand it, so that the committee understands it, and there's information to back up all of the line items in the budget. And to be able to have that transparency balanced with the fiscal reality of dealing with the town finances, both in Blackstone and Millville, as they become clearer. All right? Later tonight, the governor released his House, they call it House Two this year, House Two budget, and this afternoon, today, the Department of Ed had the preliminary, what we call the cherry sheets, in terms of the numbers, and later on this evening I'll distribute that, and next week we can spend more time delving into it and looking at it in terms of what it means for this district, in terms of that. Again, this is what you've communicated to your partners in the finance committee and the board of selectmen about, you know, what are we attempting to do? Now, call your attention to the bottom line, it's always about increasing student achievement, and it's always talking about the learning needs of students. The next slide, again, continues this budget process, and during the presentation tonight, I've said to Mr. Cameron and Mr. Dudak, if you ask us a question and we don't know the answer, we'll say, that's a good question, we don't know the answer. We don't, we haven't thought about it, I don't have the backup, I will never try to give you information that I'm not crystal clear in terms of what that represents, and we will get back to you, either in email or presentation at future school committee meetings, and providing that, you know, very important feedback. Okay? Now is the transition to Mr. Dudak. The questions that I've asked the two principals to talk about is to really talk about their school, and to talk about their vision, and to talk about, you know, the most important thing. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Dudak. Again, you've got these slides, there's a lot in here, we're not gonna read the slides to you, but I think he wants, he will take you through these slides to kind of give you a sense of what drove some of the budget recommendations that he's put forward to me, and we've tried to incorporate in the budget. Recognize, we are gonna be talking about some personnel tonight, those are not currently in that draft budget. Why? Because we need to have a discussion about personnel, you know, without, you know, getting a sense of what does that look like. All right? Michael, Mr. Dudak, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone. I haven't seen you in a while, so good to see you. I'd like to first start by presenting the high school's mission, vision, core values, and learning expectations. The high school right now is in the middle of our NEASK self-study, and this has made us really redefine who we are as a community of learners. This energizing process has allowed us to examine where we are and where we currently will be going as a school. Vision, mission, core values are aligned to the strategic plan, and we definitely gave consideration to the overall district's mission and vision. I know it's very difficult to see that there, I know you have a PowerPoint. I just wanted to just highlight a few of our items here, our core values that were voted upon by our, by the community, staff, students, and family in terms of academic excellence, communication, personal responsibility, excuse me, personal responsibility and respect. And then we're looking at the high school vision, the first sentence there, the vision of BMR is to provide relationships, rigor, realization, and relevance in the lives of our students. Moving on, we're looking at student learning needs, I'd like to focus in on a few of the topics here. When you, when we look at relationships, our focus is to really build meaningful, supportive relationships with our students and staff, and committing ourselves to the arts, the athletics, extracurriculars, will strengthen those relationships. When we look at rigor, continuing to create relevant electives, strengthening our AP program, and I will go into extending our AP program, dual enrollment programs that we have currently, online VHS classes, will provide students with opportunities to expose themselves to a variety of disciplines. Looking at relevance, we need to make sure that our core standards, the core classes that we have, as well as our electives, are made relevant to the current society that we live in. And finally, realization that all students can learn and all individuals will learn, and that doesn't come just from our faculty, but from families and students and everyone that's in the building. So I just wanted to, again, just highlight that. Moving on, these were our expectations for student academic performance and social civic performance that we redefines. And again, our student learning needs focus on district's mission and vision. I just want to stress a few key words here, in terms of what students will be able to do. Students will be able to communicate, solve problems, use technology effectively, collaborate productively, take personal responsibility in their own learning, and exercise responsible Some of our big topics today that I'd like to really focus in on is a review of our staff, so looking at our library media specialist, athletic director, foreign language teacher, looking at some instructional programs with our AP Extended Program, update with reading tarot and textbooks, enhancement of technology with Vernier Technology, which are, I mentioned last year, are science probes that our science and math teachers are using, Google Docs, and maintenance of software, which we purchased last year with Naviance with our guidance department. So those will be the big topics. Before I really get into that, I just, I really want to give you a breakdown of our faculty. So current number of sections, our average class size, and the number of teachers that we have, it's broken by department, number of sections, again, average size, and our FTEs that are all the way to the right. Our commitment of meeting the needs of students with appropriate class sizes, to me, is essential. So I, again, just wanted to show you that in terms of what we have in our building. I know the high school is a little different in terms of what core classes we have, how many sections there are, and our schedule is, building our schedule is pretty difficult in terms of where that is. Next, when we're looking at our electives, I just wanted to highlight what we have in our school. I don't know if you have a program of studies from last year, but again, I just wanted to highlight some of those that we have. The asterisk or the stars are recent electives that I've, or the staff has introduced to the program of studies in the last year and a half. So our number of electives present and expose our students to various topics and interests that meet the individual needs of our students, engaging students in electives, balance the core required courses, and align students to build on their strengths, and I really am adamant about having electives that are rigorous and relevant. Again, I just wanted to highlight a few. If you're looking under English, the Literature Through Performance course that we just added this year is going very well. We're incorporating the theater arts, which we were very limited in, and incorporating that as an elective for our juniors and seniors. There's a lot of cross-curricular activities going on, including our art department. I don't know if anyone went to our theater performance of Aladdin, but our students are really just gaining a lot of insight and are very passionate about that course, and I'm very excited to see how well it's doing.
Are those all single classes, Mike?
These are all single classes, singletons, correct?
Okay.
Very difficult to get those into our schedule and reach all of our students. I think currently in that class are about eighteen, but there were probably between twenty-five and thirty that wanted to take that course, and I know many sophomores have already talked about performance through literature. Again, it's a course that I think is outside the box, it's reaching the needs and the interests of our students, and it's something that they are excited to take, and that to me is very important and where we want to go.
Do you see those expanding, Mike, if you could, to two sections? Or one or more?
Currently, we have, for most of these electives, there are individual sections based off of the staff that we have right now. I don't see how we could move into two or three, but it's something to explore.
Okay.
Just as a follow-up to Bill, there is, there is, there is interest that would drive the higher, to another section. Okay, so it's not like we're scraping by with just the, if you had thirty, so potentially, if you had two.
Just to clarify, in building the high school's schedule, sometimes students want two courses, and they collide in the schedule, and they can't have both of them because of the matrix and other required courses absentee. That's called choice, and students have to be presented. You can't, you can't fit both of them in, and we can do one or the other, and students have to make a choice. The beauty of this is that you can introduce these electives earlier, so they're not like all waiting till their senior year, that they really can be introduced in the junior year, so that gives us at least four semesters, two years to kind of roll that out. But to the question, there's definitely a limitation on the number of staff that we have and the ability to create multiple sections, because you don't want to overload something else to create this. It's pretty much a chess match in terms of developing the schedule at the high school.
So in a situation like that, would the upperclassmen take, you know, precedence over the, say, a freshman or sophomore?
They do. Typically, when we speak to Mrs. Tessier and looking at schedules, she will look at seniors first to make sure that they can get that in there. But again, sometimes there is that choice between an AP history course or a technology robotics course. I think we try to do everything in our power to have students be able to get the courses that they're looking at, but there are conflicts. Again, looking at some of these electives, some of these are for juniors and seniors, but when we're looking at our music and art and technology courses, a lot of these are open to our ninth and tenth graders. But you do see, it's probably about thirty or forty percent of our freshmen are taking band or advanced wind ensemble, so that's their elective along with PE. So they are limited in terms of what they can take. Again, just highlighting math course with our personal finance, this, once again, is a new course that we felt was needed in our program of studies, and students are learning the basics of how to balance a checkbook and understand interest and credit cards and so forth, so that's going pretty well. And then looking at technology in our videography course, I don't know if anyone has been able to get onto our YouTube BMR site, but we have a BMR news, and some high-quality work is being done, and they're very excited and engaged in a lot of those different courses that we have. Again, I'm looking to create as many electives to meet the needs, individual needs of our students, and bring relevance to their high school career.
Can I just ask one question on that? Are there any of these classes that were recently added that aren't getting the level of participation that you expected?
Quickly looking at these, I mean, there are some that are definitely more popular And I think that's something that we need to explore for next year to see, you know, if there is a low enrollment, is it due to the fact that it is a brand-new course and students had no idea what it was about or who the instructor was, or if there isn't a need? So that's something that I think we need to survey students before we move along with what our courses will be for next year. And we are in that process of surveying our eighth graders that are coming up, so incoming ninth grade, and going through that course selection, just to make sure that we have sufficient numbers to run our classes.
Okay. Thank you.
So looking at retirements and replacements and some of our staff reductions and increases, Mrs. Tessier is retiring. She is retiring, I need to face that. And Ronald Bebo, Buddy Bebo, is also retiring. So we have two big replacements here that we need to really examine. So when we're looking at our budget, replacing a director of guidance and director of music, we are looking for somebody, quote, a veteran staff, something more than a step one, two or three. Dr. Davis is, I'm not sure where we are in terms of the budget, but what's-
That's in the budget as a replacement at a master seven.
At a master seven.
Right.
Which one was that, the guidance?
Director of guidance.
Director of guidance. We do currently have one other guidance counselor, she is in her first year, doing very well, but we are looking for some veteran experience to replace Maureen.
So do we, so we have two guidance counselors?
Two guidance counselors.
Is there a third soc-
We do have an adjustment counselor-
Adjustment counselor, okay.
And a social worker as well. In terms of increases, this is something that I'd like to talk about in the presentation, world language position. In the budget, it would be a full-time world language person. Currently, we do have two Spanish teachers taking on an additional course at a point two, so that is already built into the budget. So we are looking to have one full-time world language teacher. That would be something to look at. We have a library media specialist, possibly exploring a district-wide position that I'd like to discuss later in the presentation with Mr. Cameron, examining our physical ed and athletic director position. Currently, we did hire a new PE teacher, as well as athletic director, and Steve Silva, and he is teaching currently four PE classes. So I'd like to just really talk about our library media specialist here. As an English teacher, I sign a research paper to a student and expect them to use technology effectively. I want them to be able to find, evaluate, analyze information on the web to better enhance their learning. Students go on Google and they search a topic, let's just say it's on symbolism. I can direct and teach students some aspects of how to be appropriate digital citizens, but I need more resources. Currently, we don't have a library media communication specialist, we don't have a director of technology. We are looking at ways to provide students with resources. Personally, we had a PD day beginning of the year, we had some workshop development, and one of the interests that faculty decided that they wanted to look at were Google Docs and enhancing instruction through that. We do use Google Docs to peer-edit papers, to collaborate, sharing valuable resources. I currently have a Google Docs site where faculty have added websites and videos and PD opportunities. That's a running document for teachers to really look at and examine and to be able to enhance instruction. Again, we don't, we no longer have access to a curriculum that includes library information service components. Students are, I feel, at a disadvantage in achieving the expectations of being ethical and able retrievers of the resources available to them. We are no longer in a position to support students in gaining essential understandings of resources and technologies available to them. Last year, we did have a library media specialist who did help in helping students get to a level where they could go online, where they could research and analyze data, where they could depict whether or not it was an appropriate piece of information or not. Information on plagiarism, writing skills, writing bibliographies, internet resources are right now not adequately supported. Our core values look at using technology essentially and appropriately, and we need students to really conduct high-level inquiry and evaluate resources. Right now, I don't feel that that is appropriately being met by not having a library media or communication specialist. Looking at the slides here, there are other roles and opportunities in terms of collaboration that I feel that this library media specialist position could really get into. I did speak with Mr. Cameron about how this person could be utilized in the middle school, and I'd asked if you want to share maybe some of your information of how that person could be utilized. Essentially, we would look for somebody to be housed in our building, but being utilized as an information technology specialist for the district.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Dudak. Honestly, Mr. Dudak and I have had many conversations about strengthening the bridge between the middle school and the high school, and one of the things that we're looking at is a sense of history that the district had, especially when, at that time, the junior high was at the high school, and how you had the junior high staff who would collaborate with the high school staff, and that really, they knew each other's strengths, and they went to each other in order to gain access to a certain skill set or whatever. Since the middle school ten years ago adopted a middle school philosophy and came here, and we're veteran staff here at the middle school, I believe from time to time will pick up a phone and access their colleagues at the high school, but certainly the staff that have been hired in the last ten years, that's not necessarily a common practice, and that's what Michael, Mike and I have reflected upon. To have this library media information specialist available, not just for the students at the high school, but for the staff of the district and for the staff of the middle school, I think would better enhance the teachers to know how to be research-literate, so then they can transfer those skills and teach those skills and promote those skills to the middle school students. You know, I'm also looking at, or we're looking at, exploring ways in which the middle school teachers can be talking up, talking up the high school staff, you know, and who's at the high school who, you know, might be a go-to person for, you know, an eighth grader who is transitioning and assimilating up to the high school. So anytime that, you know, the superintendent's chair or the high school approaches the middle school as far as, you know, can we look at this position to support the secondary level and support the middle school as much as the high school, absolutely. And this is something that I have a lot of unfamiliar with in terms of, you know, how to model, how to teach, how to promote, to be research-literate, but as a principal, you know, as much as I try to get into the classroom and model something of technology, whereas if the teachers have, who, have who they should go to, or think about who they should go to, which also puts you on the teacher rubric, you know, the exemplary, you know, there's one common phrase in the exemplary ranking, which is, is able to model. And I think that's a- And I think that's a promotion that we need to do as principals, and we need to say the people that you can go to aren't so much just in your building anymore. You can look district-wide, there's someone at the high school, there's somebody at the elementary school.
What's the picture look like right now, Mike, in terms of the library? Is there anyone there? I mean, in terms of-
The library is open, on and off. We currently have our permit subs in there, if they are available. So again, if we have three people that are out, for whatever reason, the library's closed. We do open it for students that are participating in the VHS classes, but again, that's with guidance, supervision, and that's what, that's what we have.
Do teachers take whole classes down there?
They, they do have the opportunities to go down there. Do they go down? They do, but it's, but it isn't frequent. They don't have a whole lot of guidance or support in terms of what they're looking to do. Again, I think we're, we're at an age right now where we have information at our hands, that are at our fingertips. It's for teachers, for students, it just, I, right now, I do not feel that we have an adequate resource or direction as to how to analyze and really depict what is accurate information. I mean, there was an article or something that I read a few years ago where there was an elementary school student who wrote a paper on Martin Luther King. And, and, and in the paper, the research paper, depicts him as, as someone who was racist, who, just in a negative tone. And the teacher just decided to examine the paper, looked at the, the resources, and I believe the resource was a website, MLK.com or MLKjunior.com. When she went on, she found out that it was a white supremacist group that, that catered to that website and developed it. I'm afraid that students are getting onto websites and they're taking that as true accurate facts. And right now, our teachers are doing what they can. I'm trying to teach Google Docs and model that, and that's something that, as an evaluation tool and a piece, our faculty is embracing that and sharing best practices, but is it enough for our kids right now? That's something that, that we really need to explore in someone who could be a director and teach and enhance technology for instructors so they could better use that with, with students.
That's clear, that's a gap, if, if you're thinking high school's the springboard to the next step, so it's clearly what you're presenting is, if that's not there, that's going to be a gap and a deficit moving on. What about here, Justin? How is it staffed here?
In a, in a similar nature. You know, when I came back to district, one of my pet peeves was the custodials, the custodian would shut the lights down. And I understand the energy savings in that, but to me, there's just something wrong with the libraries, libraries lights on, or off, excuse me, when the school is going. So the virtual middle school's in here, we have computer lab, as you know, so that's very much alive. But it's really the ELA teachers primarily, sometimes the social studies teachers, if they're taking more of a humanities approach, they're in here, and that's when it's alive with student learning. But I, again, I think we want to emphasize the fact that, you know, we owe it to the teachers to really promote and help cultivate a skill set, that I think some of them, if they filled out right now a survey for you where they're lacking in professional development, it's, it's keeping current with technology. And again, there are some people in district, but not necessarily, like, again, I think of myself, but I'm not so much a colleague, you know? And some other school districts in professional development, you don't hire out for your consultants, you know? A lot of your own staff are the ones who are leading professional development. And I believe that's what we're prob, you know, looking at for this kind of hire.
Would there be, and I don't want to monopolize all the questions, but jump in, if this is the route you're going to go, is there technology we'd have to buy to enhance at both sites? Would there be a research base of some software that we have to buy licenses for in terms of to kind of continue to develop that, that, you know?
Yeah, I'll start. Really, the technology that we presently have at the middle school, I'll just speak to the middle school, of course, you know, is not something that has raced ahead of the faculty and staff at the middle school, but, you know, I would say the, the commitment for this coming school year would be of this position and this personnel coming online, getting a sense of all the wonderful technology we have, and we do, and really looking to promote and, you know, do their best to support the teachers with the current technology that we have. You know, sure, in two years and three years, fiscally, if we're in a place, you know, of purchasing new technology, this position, I would be, I would very much hope this position would support the middle school, you know, with any new technology. At least in the coming year, you know, I, I would not be proposing to Dr. Davis to propose to you-
Is there any that you think, Mike, that you, for the high school? I'm trying, I know of a name of one, I can't, I can't think of it right now.
Yeah, what, the text of plagiarism and stuff?
No, just, just, there's technology out there that enhances just the ability to research, you know, exactly what you were talking about in terms, you know?
I mean, I think a lot of that technology is, I mean, what's on the Internet, a lot of it is free, but it's just, again, I think for, for teachers and students to understand how to analyze, first, find the data, which is there, collect it, but also be able to analyze that. I mean, we do currently in the budget have a few informational research databases that we currently use. So our wellness department uses something, I don't recall the name of that, but also our history department has something that we renewed from last year. But again, we, we're committing our teachers to make sure that they're utilizing that. Luckily, they are. But again, as time goes on and staff turnover, are they, will they?
I don't have a number, Mike, but in the budget, we have money allocated for site licenses-
Okay.
-to, to purchase some of these programs. But again, you know, the critical piece is to have somebody that knows and understands and can give a recommendation on which one of those programs we should be looking at, and more importantly, take on the responsibility to teach the teachers and the students how to effectively use that. I think the, the thing I wanted to, you know, when Mr. Dudak's making this presentation, we still call it a library media specialist because that's kind of the license of it, but the reality is he's also introduced to the term information specialist, and it really is more of an information specialist. I love books, and I'm old, so I like to hold them, but the reality is print is moving in a very different direction as the medium is really electronic and digital. It's highly, highly unlikely, you know, that you look around this room, that once these books really are no longer needed, it is going to be more of a digital information center rather than a hard copy print library. And I, you know, have had these conversations with both Mr. Cameron and Mr. Dudak, it is a matter of, it's an essential skill for students today moving on, that they know how to access databases, and they understand that in doing any research today, you can do it. And I share my own story. When I was a doctoral student in the eighties, we went to an information librarian, we listed our parameters, and a week later, we came back and we got a printout. And you had to go through it manually, and then you got abstracts, and it was really a tedious process, right? Today, the search engines, of which Google and Bing we know most popular, but there are other search engines that you can buy as a subscription in, in social studies, for example, in history, and you can get authoritative sites, and generally, those are relatively low cost in terms, in terms of purchase, and it gives the teacher a tremendous resource, you know, not only to get video, but to get primary sources and to be able to do that. So I think the, the presentation tonight, I think as you hear them, both Mr. Cameron and Mr. Dudak, we're moving away from the library to more of an information specialist, to more somebody that's going to be supporting the faculty, as well as the students, as well as the students.
The position you described, though, sounded more like, to me, like an integration specialist. Now let's, just bear with me. If you could, like, what is, what would best practices be in a high school media center if we were, say, starting from scratch? I mean, the materials are there and so forth, but now we're going to redesign this thing. Now, in the past, when Mr. Carroll was the library media director, probably have seen names in, back in the archives, the idea at that time was that, okay, he, and it was never fulfilled, but he was like the district guy. He, he satisfied the NIAS requirement, but, you know, I want to think a little bit more globally, because, you know, you have learning centers or libraries in all the schools. So how, what would be the best practice? If we were walking into this building, this building of the high school, and it was just four walls, how, what would you do? You know, you know, much of your, much of your material now is electronic, whether it's Kindle-based, PC-based, laptop-based, tablet-based, or what have you, how would you go about that? So how does that become, how does the library become the focal point? I guess the term in Burlington is media commons or learning commons. How do we go in that direction? We probably can't leap there in 2015, but we could at least have the ship pointed in that direction. I wouldn't want us, I wouldn't want to have us, you know, do any false starts, but like, what do we do there? Now, how do we get that room open? Can we also supplant that with, say, a paraprofessional if the director or whoever that body is, is over here, teaching a Google class or, you know, modeling some, some theory or something like that? I guess that's what I'd like to see, is that, you know, that there's some concrete plan, and this is how we're going to head, head in that direction. You know, yeah, there'll have to be technology refreshes, but I think that needs a technology director to drive that. It's one thing to say, okay, we're going to buy 50 new machines, but what do we want out of this? Because the world has changed since, even in the ten, well, certainly has changed since yesterday, but in the 10 years since we opened this place, we did a lot of forward-thinking with the SMART boards, the interactivity, but you probably, I'd be hard-pressed to say, should we replace those 30 desktops that are in that room? Would we be smarter to have a, a cart of portable devices that kids could sign out and use for the day or for the two hours or whatever? You know, whether it's bring your own device or if it's one-to-one, you know, these are the, these are the places we're going to be faced with. And then, there are two standards, and I don't know where we stand, on like educator technology proficiency. Do you know where we stand on any of that?
I don't.
I don't think we've never really pushed that.
No.
I'll forward the superintendent the information I have from, I guess it's the Office of Digital Learning now, it's not, so, but, that's what I'd like to see, is that, you know, where we, we envision this, Mike, and Justin, for that matter.
I think in the conversations we've had, you use the term learning center. I think it is a rethink that it's not the library, but it really is a learning information center. And again, what drove this was looking, and when I said, what are the learning needs at the high school? And when I walk down to the library, right, and I see it not open because there aren't, there aren't, and they're subbed, I mean, this, this is not specialist, but at least kids can come in and access because there's an adult supervisor in there, but the disconnect between not having that resource for the students, but also the faculty themselves, you know? It takes time to research a website, to create a link, to add it to your, your website for the students to do it. We do have some people at the high school that are quite good at this, all right? Because they've invested their time and effort and energy in it, and the reality is, it speaks to the learning need. And then in talking to Mr. Cameron, it's the same issue, you know, in terms of having somebody that has that expertise to kind of find it and review it, and then share it with the teachers, and then it can be integrated, you know, you use the term integration specialist, you know? Again, I think that's all part of a rethink of this, and clearly, the conversation has never been around hiring, and I, and I don't mean this in a negative way towards people that are professional librarians, but we're not looking somebody to catalog books.
Not anymore.
You know, I mean, that, that is not the skill set that we're looking at, and I, and I, when we had this discussion, you know, I went to the website at Simmons College, which has a Graduate School of Library Science, it's all about information.
Yep.
It's all about information. That's what they're teaching.
And the key thing is-
And it's important for us to kind of break that down.
You know, good resources, and they need to learn to be, you know, good digital citizens, so that cuts down on any of the bullying issues and so on. And I don't even know, is there any curriculum, like either in the middle school or in the high school, that, like, addresses that? Like, you know, you know, you really probably shouldn't put this picture up on Facebook, or you probably shouldn't tweet this message because it's, it's hurtful. Do we do anything like that in, in any of the, any of the classes?
I mean, we do have advisory on, on every Wednesday of each cycle, and concepts and topics like that do come up. But again, is it, is it something that, it's a written curriculum? No.
We have chapter books at the middle school level that the kids read about bullying and online bullying. We also have, we've had a DA visit once a year, typically an assembly.
In the, in the, probably your level, Justin, is probably like some type of rotation or, is there anyone that, you know, where they get, like, kind of-
Health and wellness a little.
Some technology that says, okay, you know, here's the appropriate use or anything like that?
Health and wellness covers a little in the bullying, you know, the anti-bullying and, you know, things like that.
I had a question, getting back to the media specialist position or whatever we're calling it, integrated. How do we ensure all the students throughout ninth to 12th grade will have access to it? I mean, like you said, some are very good and the teachers feel like they're up and running, some people are not going to access it. I mean, how do we ensure the teachers are gonna, I mean, it's not going to be a course where kids are going in there for six to eight weeks, so how do we ensure that it's going to be used, I guess, by all students and teachers?
I mean, I think it's a great question. I think there's various strategies, but I think when we're looking at educators, I mean, that is part of their evaluation piece in terms of how are they incorporating technology within their, their classroom as well as out. Looking at a position from a library media information specialist, my hope and goal is that there is collaboration, professional collaboration happening where that, that person can reach out and make sure that teachers are utilizing that person and that person's strengths. I mean, those are, just thinking out loud right now, those are certain things that I think could happen.
My concern would be some teachers would use it eight to 10 weeks out of the session, and somebody will use it one, two, and the kids are going to miss out, is my concern. How do we ensure the kids are going to have the access that they need to that if it's not a scheduled kind of-
The English Language Arts framework addresses the issue of research and electronic research, and, you know, certainly, it's embedded in that framework for English Language Arts and, you know, starting even at the elementary level. And the person that we're talking about would not be the primary person teaching those skills, but we would envision that person being able to work with the teachers to help them implement a unit with the, with the information specialist helping them. And, you know, prior experiences that I've had as a superintendent, having, if you will, the luxury of having a full-time library media person at both the middle school and high school, we were moving in that direction, that the person was spending less time in the library, more time consulting the teachers and going in and assisting English Language Arts teachers live because we have computers in the rooms, it's much easier to give a demonstration, you know, with the SMART board, to be able to show it and how you, how you put that material together. So that would be the way in which, it's part of the standards, and it would be part of the integration and the professional development to the teachers with somebody who'd be able to do it. I don't, I just want everybody to think, if you got this position, this person would not be running around with a schedule, spending literally five or six days in every English Language Arts class. That's, that's a poor way to utilize a person with the skill set that we would be looking for to do it, but they would be, you know, working on it. But I have to be honest, we are starting at a, at a point of nothing. This will not happen overnight, and to Mr. Buckley's question, it is going to take time to refine and develop the plan. The fortunate thing is, when you're hiring somebody, you look for somebody that has some experience- The fortunate thing is, when you're hiring somebody, you look for somebody that has some experience, some enthusiasm, and the credentials to move this along and assist what I consider a faculty that, quite frankly, is quite technologically savvy, given the technology that we've placed in the classrooms to do that. So I think we're starting with a lot of embedded technology and utilization, but I think this person would enhance it and bring a skill set that teachers could rely on and deal with. Again, the focus initially, I think, has got to be realistic. It would be the high school and middle school. And I think the next rollout would be thinking about how to, how to extend that person down into, into the elementary level. Whether that's even doable for one person to literally service four schools. But I think, you know, when you have nothing, this, this is a, this is an area that we need to, you know, give serious considerations. Because right now, we have, we have, we have a void at both schools on this issue.
Thank you.
Let me just reflect on Mr. Buckley's, you know, how do we envision? I think one dynamic of this position that we have to really look, look towards as educators, and points the compass needle back to student learning, is sure, how they research, but how they present that research. The presentation tools that are available to students through technology, we're in a great age. And teachers need to understand, or better understand, universal design and ed reform. And if a teacher, if a student wants to present information for a presentation, and the student goes to the teacher and says, "I know you asked me to do a PowerPoint, but do you mind if I do a prezi, or I do something else?" The teacher's supposed to be able to be in a place to accept that. And maybe the role of this personnel and this professional can be, you know, this is what a prezi is. You know, so a student could walk into this room and do the research, but also put together the presentation, you know? And think about the types of students we can reach as well. I have a student right now who's just really struggling with school phobia. And one of the things that I presented to the social studies teacher is, let him do his presentation through an avatar. And that just opened up a whole new world for the student. The student didn't have to stand in front of his class. And it opened up a whole new world to the teacher as well. And we're looking for potentially this personnel to do that as well.
And again, I'm going back to what our learning needs are in the high school. We're looking for, for students to be, to use technology effectively. And having someone to direct, to drive, our instructors to use technology effectively and guarantee that would be meeting that standard.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Just moving on with, I'd like to just have a discussion and share with you my, my thoughts on our athletic director. Again, on a PowerPoint, I do have job responsibilities that I listed. This actually came from a school spring job application that, that's out there in terms of some of the responsibilities that an AD has. More and more responsibility has been placed on the, on the athletic director. To maintain and ensure that all policies, regulations, rules are met. I'm sure you're all aware of policies relating to concussions, to hazing, to bullying, to sportsmanship. Those are all things that an athletic director now needs to deal with. We need to commit to a professional, or to the professionalism of our athletic department and program, and ensure that the needs of all of our student athletes are met. Allowing an AD more time to supervise, to mentor, to evaluate, and teach our coaches will ensure that student athletes have an enriching experience, that are aligned to our core values. Respect and communication are core values that we are looking, that we're committed to. Having an AD who's overcommitted, cannot have conversations, cannot mentor, cannot supervise all of our coaches, and when coaches aren't supervised and mentored, the lack of communication and respect may not always be there. So again, I feel when we're looking at an athletic director role, currently, Steve does teach four classes as a PE teacher. Again, we're looking at the learning needs of our students, and especially our student athletes that are directly affected. Are our coaches mentored, supervised, and evaluated appropriately? I can't guarantee that that's happening right now because of the, to me, the overwhelming responsibilities that we are, we have placed on our athletic director. Are all of our coaches going through clinics and workshops where they do understand all the MIA rules, concussion policies, hazing policies? Not sure that that's happening. Looking at the middle school, we do have clubs and extracurriculars here. We do have a middle school basketball program where we do have coaches as well. And I'm not sure how much communication, dialogue, supervision from an athletic director who goes to workshops, does understand concussion policies, and, and strategies on sportsmanship, and so forth, if that's actually getting down to, to the middle school level. Justin, I'm not sure if you can maybe share on, on how you feel that the athletic director, not that I'm looking at this as a district-wide position, but how the, the AD could help out the middle school model that you have currently with the athletics.
Yep, focusing on the inter-scholastic program that is just solely based in the middle school, which is the basketball, the girls, girls team and the boys team. As Mr. Dudak just said, the opportunity for these coaches to stay current with the laws, stay current with, you know, honestly, coaches are asked nowadays to almost attend workshops and professional development. Difficult to do, especially if your coaches, like mine currently, are parents. If we had an AD sitting in all these workshops and such, and had the opportunity to really make himself or herself available for the middle school coaches, I think it would just really promote the program and allow them to stay current. And I think we just have the disconnect with absolutely no fault, you know, to Mr. Silva. So it would be something that would just, you know, enhance the middle school basketball program.
So what's the proposal? Again, I, is it...
An AD at the middle school and an AD at the high school?
Right now, right now, I'm just trying to think. He teaches four classes and has a stipend position as an athletic director?
Correct.
Okay, so if we move towards this, what would the picture look like?
I, I think we've explored different options, but ideally, it would be nice to see his teaching load lessoned.
Now, a long time ago, in a country far, far away, there used to be language in the agreement that called out the athletic director. Basically, got an extra, he did the four and four-three, or whatever it's called, it works out to me. I did a search of the current agreement, I couldn't find it. Maybe it came out with the NEASK stuff, I'm not sure. Maybe it's in Wareham, for all I know. But anyway, you know, I, I think that that, that's an interesting thought, that you need to, we may need to just make sure that if we make any adjustments, we may need to go and negotiate it. Because realistically, there's no spot for someone that teaches less than what is prescribed in the Unit A contract, being a Unit A member. You know, the Unit B's folks and so forth, but a different animal. This is, we ran into this a few years back when, when the district was kind of in a better financial situation, where we had some people that were doing some other activities and had less, less of a load. Then we tried to move the load back on them, and then they, we kind of had some issues. So before we, you know, I just want you to let you know that there's, there's a, an agreement, you know, the collective bargaining agreement will have to be looked at. Another thing I have to ask is that, there's a school of under five hundred, a high school, and we'll say, I don't know, so we have one MIAA sport that's confined here, but that they can also compete in some of the other sports, right? So, so say, six hundred kids. Does that constitute the need for, like, an athletic director, for the lack of a better term, a full-time athletic director? That's, that's a tough pill for me to swallow, especially when we're trying to balance, you know, educational programs for, you know, literacy and so forth, so.
Yeah, I think, to clarify, I asked Mr. Dudak to do some research on our league, and generally in our league, we don't have full-time athletic directors. The, the teaching load varies, you know, by, by district, generally not four. Most people are teaching two or three. The reality is, when we look at ourselves, even though a small school, twenty-eight teams, twenty-eight teams. We're right up there with some of the larger districts in our, in our league. We choose to offer that many sports, and we choose to have coaches, you know, in those, in those issues. And as Mr. Dudak has articulated, many of those coaches are not currently faculty members, but community people. And all of these very specific laws, you know, relative to hazing in Massachusetts, the new concussion law, the new anti-bullying law, applies to coaches. And people are held accountable, and how do we have somebody that can do that? That's a new challenge. The data that came back, and I'll let Mr. Dudak speak to it, was generally in our league, ADs were teaching two classes and, and had a stipend to be AD. I think the point you raised about, about the association, yes, I think we'd have to go back and say, because right now, a teacher is a teacher, they're recognized in Unit A, and in Appendix A, we have a stipend for the AD. So if it's a matter of teaching load, I think we could get a memorandum of understanding. The person would still be paid on the teacher's scale, and they would get, they would be getting the stipend as per the contract. But I just think, you know, I'm convinced, looking at what we are attempting to do, what we're saying, again, you know, what are the student learning needs, and that's just not academics. We've got to recognize that we have other programs that we need to have supervision, and we need to ensure that, that, that our student athletes are getting the same kind of coaching that we're expecting them to get in the classroom with our teachers, and somebody's got to be available to kind of deal with that. So I, you know, I, the, the discussion we've had is to try to reduce this teaching load from four classes to two. All right, which would necessitate having to go out and hire a forty percent phys ed teacher, because we can't give up the phys ed kind, because the schedule's so tight with the faculty. We just can't stop that. But I think, you know, we would have better success at hiring somebody, you know, in as a part-time phys ed teacher that maybe would be coupled with being a permanent sub, and then roll it around for a job. But Mr. Silver, you know, has done, has done a great job, is very enthusiastic, is very committed, but talk about being stretched thin. And more and more demand, you know, we just went through the anti-bullying thing and saying, this applies to coaches now. So we have to have a plan that the coaches get this policy, but more importantly, somebody is talking to them about, what does this really mean? And the law is, the law, the process is catching up to the law in terms of where we, where we need to go.
Now, I have to ask, but, and this won't make, make any friends with me, with some people in the community, but what about the assistant principal at the high school? Could he assume the duty of the athletic director?
We just negotiated their contract, and we didn't include that in the discussion, but...
I'm just throwing that out there.
I hear what you're saying.
Because once again, we are also looking at, you know, at one time, that there was many more kids in that high school, and, you know, we kind of...
Yeah, I think...
Economies.
I think the issue...
Sorry, Heath.
What I'm, what I'm looking at is, if we choose to continue to have twenty-eight teams, even though some of those teams may only be populated by fifteen or twenty kids, that coach has to be supervised. And that's really what the variable is. You know, you drop from twenty-eight teams to twenty, you obviously have eight fewer coaches, but, you know, than the job. But I'm not sure that that's in the learning, that's in the best interest of the learning needs of the students. You know, to pass judgment on what sports we keep, what sports we reduce. But, you know, the, the discussion did not center around the assistant principal, given, given the level of work that he has to maintain. Again, he's got the same, not the concussion law, but the anti-bullying and the anti-hazing.
Evaluations.
And that, you know, that at a val, you know, at a high school, is pretty significant. Pretty significant in terms of, of doing that. But personally, I did not, when Mike came to me on this, did not feel that we could even think about proposing any kind of a full-time AD. That definitely was not our collective thinking, starting with, you know, what do these student athletes need? We expect that they're going to get treated with the same respect, same dignity, and the same expectations by their coaches. Who's going to impart that, you know, to them? We have to have that athletic director being the person that's liaison with that, holding them accountable, and having the time. That's the issue, having the time to meet with them.
And when that doesn't happen, there is liability there, you know, and, you know...
Fortunately, you know, unfortunately, you're correct, you know, that there's huge liability issues, you know, when in fact, coaches, you know, for all, for all of the best intentions, make a decision that's not consistent, you know, with the current law in Massachusetts relative to hazing, or the new law that was expanded to include coaches in terms of anti-bullying. Huge ramifications for that, and, and dealing with it.
So it sounds like the starting point, your dialogue has been about, has been reducing caseload, reducing teaching, and so you can have some of that. Now, that, and, so as, just so it's clear in my head, as you reduce teaching, that doesn't necessarily mean he's going to get coaches in during the day. He's still going to have some responsibility after school to get coaches in, and have coaching meetings each season, so forth.
We talked about that, you know, in terms of what would we expect of the, of the athletic director. They've got a rotating schedule at the high school, but if the person's teaching two in that rotation, there may well be days that that person won't come to work until ten o'clock in the morning. Why? Because they're going to be doing supervision of sports, right? So I think that gives us flexibility. To Mr. Buckley's point, yeah, I think that's a memorandum of understanding with the Teachers Association about how we're looking at that. There's no, as I understand it, you know, it's always been, the person gets the stipend, and they are expected to be at athletic events. You know, whether that's a, you know, a Saturday, you know, football game, or, or a weekly, you know, after-school, particularly in the winter, you know, sporting event, you know, basketball and springs...
Clearly, at home games, that's the expectation.
So it's always been part of the deal, but the issue would be to have that a flexibility, such that if you've got a new coach that happened to be working, and you say, "Look, I can't get there, but I could get there at four o'clock," then my expectation is that Mr. Dudak and the athletic director would accept that responsibility to deal with it. So what I, yeah, what we're looking for tonight in this presentation is, do you agree that the proposals that we're talking about have merit? And we can convert them to the numbers and put them in the budget. We're not asking tonight to say, "We're going to do this," but is this a direction that you support? Is this, is this a, is this an area that has merit? And let's incorporate it into the budgeting process, and then ultimately, as Mr. Buckley has reminded me, we've got to do the balance of the revenues, the expenses, and we've got to come up with a budget. And, you know, that, that exercise. But at least at this level, we're having this discussion about how this fits into the, to meeting the learning needs of the students. And so this has been, I think, a very helpful discussion on this issue.
Yeah, one, one thing we didn't touch on, I definitely see the sensitivity around all of the legislation that's going to continue to come. They're not pulling back any of that, for good reason. Where we do have a significant gap, I think, and it was shown by the, the baseball coaches coming here, is that, you know, the grounds and the facilities really need to be really evaluated. And then, the focus has to be on prioritizing where we need the investment. So for, for the coaches, for baseball to come in, that's great that they took that initiative. However, the soccer fields need something, and so does field hockey. I mean, they all need something. And to have one set of eyes looking at that and sitting down with all of these guys and ladies and saying, "What is the priority? What do we need to do, and how do we make those investments for the things we need, in what order?" I think is critical.
I think I've mentioned to you, the director of, not the director, the groundskeeper reports to me. I mean, you know, he and I are on constant contact with the, with the snow, but even before that, you know, getting the priority of getting, you know, fields mowed and getting assessments of where we are and whatever. Quite frankly, you give the AD a little bit more time. I'm not going to be here, but I would strongly recommend to my successor that the athletic director, working with the high school principal and middle school principal, are really doing this, you know, grounds review and coming up with, you know, grounds plan. Because right now, we're spending money in the athletic budget to do some ground maintenance stuff, all right? That's just the way it's been done. It could, I think, be done more cost-effectively and coordinated. It could, I think, be done more cost-effectively and coordinated, but, you know, they, that person reports to me. And, you know, we've got trucks and mowers and all kinds of stuff that we have to worry about. I know how corrosive salt is on a truck. New skill.
If we were to reduce that load, is there a vision for that, to hire a phys ed?
Yeah.
For two class, like, what does that look like?
Point four, a point four FTE. We'd advertise that position as a point four. But again, in our thinking, to kind of maybe capture that person, we also have these, these positions for permanent subs. So we could augment point four with, with permanent sub duty, you know, which, which would augment. It wouldn't be a full-time teacher, but you'd combine two salaries and make it a little bit more attractive to do that. You know, Mike has one more area that he wanted to talk about.
Funny, F four language.
Anything about computers also?
And information specialists. Go ahead. Mike, go ahead.
Sure. Just moving on. The next topic I really wanted to look at was the Advanced Placement Support Program. As you know, BMR is a small school. We have under five hundred kids. We do have AP classes. They are, they are all singletons. So we have one AP bio class, one AP bio teacher, one AP US history teacher. Teachers don't have that opportunity, or many opportunities, to be able to collaborate with other AP teachers that are teaching the same exact subject throughout the year. And providing multiple forums for students and teachers to be able to collaborate and experience various instructional styles will enhance their learning experience. So when we're looking at this Advanced Placement Program, the DVC, the Dual Valley Conference, principals have gotten together. We get, get together every month. And we are committed to raising the academic rigor and expose our teachers as well as our students in a collaborative environment where students are able to be pushed a little, a little more, being in larger environments, larger classroom sizes, and really take on a, an environment that's different than what they have currently. So the way that we're looking at this Advanced Placement Support Program would be to incorporate all DVC schools, incorporate all of our teachers to be able to collaborate and come up with lessons that would extend off of what they're doing currently and having Saturday sessions. So let's just say that we're hosting AP Biology at BMR. So Hope Dale and Sutton and Whitemanville students will be coming over along with several AP level, AP bio teachers or AP chem teachers to really incorporate lessons that will engage students and extend off of what they're currently doing. Science is a, is a nice example in terms of the AP Placement or AP Extended Program. Bio and chem have seven or eight labs that they need to get through in, in a year's time to be able to better prepare for the AP exam. This would be an opportunity where AP level teachers could get together, collaborate, and, and really share their expertise with a, a group of students that are coming from various schools, various backgrounds, and, and really pushing themselves to, to really extend off of what they're getting. So that, that's something else that I would like to look at. And that is part of our budget process right now.
That's in addition to, those Saturday sessions would be, in addition to, like, Saturday once a month, that would all be getting together and.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I mean, speaking with the other principals, there are two districts that have participated in the, I believe it's the MMSI Initiative to extend off of AP and, and expand the AP programs and really excited and engaged students to, to be a part of that. It is pretty costly, so that's why we're, we're not looking into that right now. But they said that about seventy-five percent of the students that were in AP programs actually attended those Saturday sessions. So it's a way to really engage our students and, and really push them to, to want to do more, to really expand and really take on that responsibility, that personal responsibility, to, to really become lifelong learners. Which is, again, we're, we're looking at our, our learning standards and our, our core standards from a district standpoint. And I think this would, would definitely be a benefit for our students if we could arrange this. It helps our, our teachers as well. Collaboration. Right now, we have one AP bio teacher. Who is she talking to? There are avenues, but having people in the districts that were within ten miles of, of how many high schools that are looking to get together, and this is something that we, we would like to, to move forward with.
Great.
This is relatively low cost if everybody goes in on it. Round numbers?
Round number, we're looking at about approximately five thousand. That would be a max. Again, this would call, this would pay for transportation to and from different schools, instructional stipends, a bottle of water and a, and a breakfast bar in the morning. And they would be in, in our buildings for approximately four or five hours. So that would, that would, that would be the cost for that.
This would be all grade levels? All high school?
Eight, if students enrolled in AP class.
Oh, AP.
So if you did any AP bio.
Yeah, but it could be all, all four grades.
Six or seven high schools would collaborate. Teachers would plan to do one of these, as Mike said, one of these essential labs. They could walk through it. You can't think, you know, that lab experience because there's larger cohort, multiple teachers providing support and taking the students, you know, through that.
So would that AP bio class, just theoretically, just thinking out loud, would they meet six times, six Saturdays throughout the year?
We would be looking at, I believe it's two sessions, two Saturday sessions. So we're not overcommitting our students or, or instructors because we are looking to go and incorporate bio, our maths, our Englishes, the humanities. So they would, they would, looking at the model that we're exploring, probably one per semester.
Similar vein to that, is there any way, you said at the outset that we're doing a lot of singletons. You know, if we can only do AP bio or AP plus every other year, same thing may be happening right up the road in Sutton or Douglas. Is there any way we could, more of a virtual or distance thing, we could trade off students? I know, like, yeah, it, you know, a couple of Saturdays may be part of it. But could the whole course be offered in that fashion, potentially?
I mean, there have been discussions, but that's something that we, we definitely need to explore, especially looking at our rotating schedule and, and getting kids in and out.
That's true, yeah.
Even Skyping.
Transportation, Skyping.
You know, but rotating schedule is, is, pretty much kills that.
Virtual high school does offer some AP offerings. And, you know, the, the success on it is, the student has to be highly motivated. And again, most of those offerings are not in the sciences simply because of the lab required, but, you know, AP history or AP.
Economics is popular. And again, I think extending off of that, we do have students that take some AP level courses through VHS. There are certain schools that do offer an AP economics course in school. So that person would be able to participate in an AP Extended Workshop on a Saturday. Again, to hopefully better prepare that person for an exam or for, for a college-level class that they take in their freshman, freshman year.
It would, it would be nice to, you know, even, especially the sciences exposed. That was some feedback from a family member of mine is that it was great that, you know, he did well in the, in all the AP classes, but he wished he were more sciences. So that's something to take up.
So next, we're looking at technology. This is a Vernier, Vernier technology. We, we do currently have science probes. We're just extend, we're trying to extend off of what we currently have. Just to kind of give you a, just a quick story, I walked into a physics class just recently and students were engaged in a lab. They were, they had these handheld probes. And I, and I asked them what they were working on, and they said that they were looking and, and measuring velocity. I, I tried to extend on that conversation a little bit more, being, being the principal and, and trying to understand whether they were truly engaged, that they know and understand the learning objective. And essentially what they were telling me was that they were gathering data and further analyzing that through probes that they were using through Vernier technology. So they had the probes to be able to gather the data. We have the software currently in our computers and our iPads to be able to analyze that. For me, as a principal, I get excited when you see inquiry-based lessons happening. There's problem solving. We're analyzing data and we're using technology effectively. So I'd like to be able to extend off of the probes that we currently do use. And they are typically being used in our science and math courses. I personally just walked into that physics class and looking at velocity. It's something that the kids really take on and it's an, there's an analytical approach to that, and it's immediate. And that's something that, that is, that, that's essential for our students. In terms of just benefits of probe wear, again, I think just quickly just going through this, I think we're looking at student engagement from a, in a higher order thinking skills, using analysis, synthesizing and evaluating data in terms of the probe wear. Looking at, from a state or MCAS model. This isn't average science scores from MCAS. I, I would believe this is coming from a common assessment from a national standard. You can see that when, when students are using probe wear one to two times a month, their average science scores do increase. So that is Vernier technology. Two more quick points. Textbooks. You will see in, in the budget that we are looking for some costs with adding textbooks or updating textbooks, particularly in French, science and math. This is just a quick snapshot, which I, I do remember sharing with you last year. You do recall that a lot of those books were pretty out to date. And we are looking to update a lot of our techn, technology and our instruction in textbooks. When we look at textbooks now, and we, we call publishers, and this is something that I love to be able to have conversations with, we're not just purchasing a physical textbook, we're also purchasing copyright. We're purchasing access codes to online websites that have, again, I come from a bio background, but having virtual online labs on there, having immediate assessments when we were looking at quizzes. We have current videos that are being explored. When I look at French and, and being able to incorporate and purchase some French resources, essentially that's our language lab. There, there's a lot of language lab materials, auditory devices that, that will be able to help our students to get through the curriculum from a, from a current standpoint. So that, that finally is our, that's our textbooks. Again, the French, when we're looking at culture videos, news and networking, and lecture tours. Finally, again, I do appreciate that we, we did and have been supporting Naviance. What can I tell you about Naviance? I think that Naviance has allowed students to really be able to explore their careers, really exploring what is out there when they graduate. With our limited guidance staff, I think our, our guidance really appreciates the fact that, I mean, they do. Their goal is to, to meet with students at least three times a year. But this allows that independent exploration for our students to be able to really explore on their own and really take, take on some initiative in, in terms of what they're looking to do. Speaking with a guidance counselor today who was walking out of the building, she told me that ninety percent of the seniors are on Naviance. They're exploring it. They're applying online, looking at colleges. Those that are not looking at colleges are building resumes and using those when they go in for interviews. Our sophomores are really getting into career exploration. So they're, they're really getting an understanding of, of what is out there for careers, what they really need to do, and, and how much of a match that is in terms of what their, their, their interests are. And, and speaking to her, we have more students currently that are applying to colleges because of how easy it is from an online standpoint to be able to do that. From a data standpoint, our guidance counselor literally needs to click one button and she could figure out the percentage of students that have been online, that have applied to colleges, what schools they've applied to, what they've, what schools they've gotten into, and which ones they haven't. And that's a great tool, communication tool for them to, to real, to essentially see how, how the students are utilizing the, the information. Before Naviance, I don't know how our guidance staff was able to assess truly what students were really applying to schools or building their resumes or looking at career interest inventories. So I do appreciate that we are supporting Naviance, and, and I hope that we continue to do that.
Is it just at the high school, Mike? Are you using it? Just in it all? No? And maybe we could remind Mrs. Tessia that, you know, we did get that just for her so she wouldn't retire. I won't go far, but worth a shot.
That's great. I mean, Naviance, even if you buy more of it, there's scheduling in there that you can do, there's.
Scheduling, there's SAT prep, which we're exploring as well. And we're actually, students are using the SAT prep as well from, from their juniors. Their sophomores and juniors are using that. And we are trying to incorporate, their smart goal is to incorporate Naviance nine through twelve. And so our ninth graders will be utilizing that more from a, a study skills standpoint and that transition into high school.
I mean, I've used it with middle schools too, seventh, eighth grade, to really kind of build that bridge, having a seven through twelve kind of outlook. Not that they know, you know, what they want to do, but that definitely, I mean, that's definitely something to explore, you know, down the road too, as you continue to use it. It, it, it's a great, it's a great resource.
Maybe a tool to help with retention in the district.
Well, I'm wondering if it would provide, we've talked about surveying students after they leave. And I'm wondering how that might connect with those students if they're still hooked up with a Naviance afterwards.
Maureen Tessier mentioned to me that there is that capability, and, and the states do. Students do sign off when they go to college not knowing that their, their data is incorporated so that we could actually see how many students are graduating within four years, what their GPAs look like, what they're majoring in. So that's data that we're looking forward to examining in the future.
Any questions from Mr. Dudak and what he's talked about? And again, my recommendation is that we go to Mr. Cameron and then the line item budgets that appear this evening. And again, if you have specific questions. But again, I want to give Mr. Cameron some time and then have this bigger discussion. Do you want me to incorporate that into the budget, you know, so that we can then put it on the bottom line and see how it impacts? All right, so, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you. My presentation is, is very succinct, just a few slides. I do want to reflect just very quickly on the transparency of this process and the fact that you have the secondary level presenting as, as one. Mr. Chaplin, you just mentioned, you know, looking at something because in the district you're in, seven through twelve. You know, the more discussions I think we have, and as much as we value being a middle school here and not a junior high and not a prep for high school, I think there are certain practices that if we start looking at the secondary level and how the high school can support the middle school and the middle school can support the high school. And, and these, these times right here really strengthen, strengthen that bridge. So I just wanted to reflect upon that. I'm going to really just, I'm going to go to the second of, I believe, just three slides. And very succinctly, the, the budget vision for the middle school for FY15 is, is really just to preserve the integrity of the middle school philosophy. And that is, if, if we got to a point further down in this budgetary process where the numbers just weren't support, supportive of Mr. Dudak's new programs and, and you all or Dr. Davis came to me, you know, the middle school staff and I, we would do everything to preserve the teaming concept in the middle school philosophy. That's extraordinarily important. That was part of the scope and sequence of the design of this building. And it really is the heart of, you know, the middle school. So just looking at the slide to a few of the bullet points. You know, all these bullet points, with the exception of maybe the Spanish program, won't, they're really not in the budget in a sense of, you know, the only thing we would look to do in furthering the commitment would be to possibly offer more professional developments in, in a couple of these highlighted items. So in STEM, the literacy, again, as much as important for me to be here supporting the secondary level, I also think it's important and truly part of my role to network with the elementary school principals and look at the literacy push that's happening down there. And for me to support that and for the middle school teachers to support that. And I believe what we brought on, that second bullet point, one of the bullet points seems to be missing, the commitment to the ELA split in the first year, in the full year reading course for the. The commitment to the ELA split in the first year, in the full year reading course for the sixth and seventh graders, which started in, in fall two thousand and twelve, as presented to you last year. This offers the sixth and seventh grade students eight thousand more minutes in literacy. That doesn't include the Spanish program, which I think is a, just a wonderful literacy program in itself. I'll put that just aside for a second. I think back to last year when we had the two week poetry residency and the adults who came and did the in-service with the staff and with the students. The sixth and seventh grade teachers reflected upon that and really liked the fact that they were able to do that in one of the ELA classes. But yet the LA teacher met with that same class, you know, to make sure that the curriculum wasn't so, let's say disrupted, even though what was coming in with the poetry was very much part of the curriculum. So a commitment to the ELA split, a commitment to the STEM initiatives, the STEM classes, not only in the after-school program where, you know, the STEM, every, every time I turn, the STEM club and program is somewhere and some sort of competition, but as you know, we have STEM classes six through eight as well. The commitment to the Spanish program, again, this is really the only bullet point that you might see in the budget. Purchasing of textbooks for our Spanish program, we currently don't have it. And that's probably because, you know, we've dusted some off. I guess in the interest of full disclosure, we found some in a closet and they were from the high school. I think they were stamped like nineteen ninety-four or something like that. The commitment to the twenty-first century learning and the learning which is happening in the, in the after-school program. I was very thankful when Dr. Davis and I collaborated on the middle school budget. As you know, one hundred percent of all the enrichment activity that is happening here at the middle school is funded by the PTO. And really the pace that I believe I am on with the PTO in terms of fundraising, we're on quite the pace. And, you know, I, I don't want to say we're get to a point where we're going to tire out or burn out, but it's very, very much appreciative that the budget that's been presented to you has a commitment from the district for things like the art club, the STEM club. You know, all these clubs that are well established at this point. And the PTO can now maybe shift and focus back on, say, field trips and supporting nature's classroom and supporting Washington DC because those trips cost right now are only going up. And in other districts, you see PTOs really supporting those types of endeavors versus stipending the teacher and then the supplies for an after-school program, which again, the PTO is currently doing. And finally, the most important, the commitment to the teaming-based philosophy of the middle school.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said these items are currently not in the budget, in this year, this school year's budget?
Well, correct.
Is that what you were referring?
With the exception of the Spanish textbooks. So the Spanish textbooks are in FY fifteen. The other, again, for some reason they're not bulleted, but the others, everything that reads the commitment to sans the Spanish is really just a commitment towards a lot, you know, giving more support to the teachers in the areas. But as I said earlier, we have STEM courses, we split the ELA class two years ago. And we're just looking to further that commitment.
So one other thing you mentioned was a base about the ELA. You said you currently have eight thousand more minutes? That, that's already happening? And that's being taught by the current staff?
The ELA staff, correct.
The staff that was added to, to put that in, that's why I'm using the term commitment, gets in there again. So it's not new because it's in the current budget, but we're committed to the effectiveness of that added at sixth and seventh grade, that additional reading time.
So I guess that's what.
To their ELO, ELO class.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It is not, you're not including it in this new budget?
It is, it is.
It is?
But it's not a new program?
It's not, but it is in.
There's no additional funding needed. Is that the better way to say it?
Yeah, thank you.
You're just reinforcing the level of commitment you'd like to see as we continue to move.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I, I think if, if I go home and my wife shares, you know, what did you present? You know, we should be very surprised that I was this succinct and I think some of you are as well. You know, with that said, I think we're to the point at the middle school where we brought so much online the last two or three years. Let's slow down a little, let's focus on the professional development. Let's focus on what the elementary schools are doing with literacy and seeing how well that can find its way up here. You know, and I think it's his term. You know, it's his term, I would like to support as much, you know, the high school and strengthening the district, you know, as I have or have tried to do for the middle school in the last few years.
Well, I think that was always your intent too, because when you talked about, came before us before and talked about STEM, you talked about how do I get these students prepared for the high school, for what's going to happen up there? And you've done a good job in, in setting that stage for them. And now I think Mr. Doudak is looking at, okay, now how do I take those kids and keep them moving in that direction? And that, those are all the things you.
And you see that with the electives. I mean, these are all new electives with robotics and lead and.
I'd like to take a couple of them.
And so, I mean, this is, it's all stemming from middle school and making sure that there is that push for STEM courses. We can't have that happening in the middle school and not happening in the high school. We need to extend on the learning experiences and with Justin's push in the middle school, that's only pushed us at the high school to do that and it's putting us in a better place overall.
A lot of my ideas, I'm, I'm just calling the high school and saying, you know, I've got this great idea. My staff are very relieved.
When we look at our concerns about kids choicing out, these are the kinds of things we're looking to strengthen so that there is that continuity that exists, so that kids are excited when they leave middle school about going up to BMR. And we won't lose them because we're adding these additional programs. I think it's, it's the right, right direction.
I want to put you on the spot and you'll have to ask, answer me now, but eventually I'd like to hear about, like the step-up day or the, the eighth grade to ninth grade kind of orientation that you guys do and I'm sure you're planning on it.
I'll go a further step than that. Just today, all the principals came together to talk about the seventh grade. And I'm looking to do, now we can call it an annual, second annual seventh grade district celebration. A big part of the goal of that is sure to get them down in the elementary schools, reestablish those connections, that district tie, have them do some community service, but I'd be very transparent to all of you. I want them up at BMR, I want the seventh graders up there. And I want to have them see what great things are happening there well before they make that decision. Because when you talk about eighth graders going up to BMR, unfortunately, some of them are going up there with a self-fulfilling prophecy of the high school and their, you know, their own life up there. The seventh grade is really where we're committed to really look at. And, you know, not only to, you know, really have, give them that day to shine, but give them that opportunity to do the service learning at the elementaries, but again, go right up to the high school. You know, we're looking at right now a day in April.
Any other questions?
Did you say that all the, the clubs were run solely by the, by the PTO funding?
Well, I, I guess whenever I say the word clubs, there's a separation that I should make on the record. Student Council, National Junior Honor Society, Yearbook. I'm sorry, there's one more, the district is funding. You know, I, I guess the reason why I separate those, you know, with the twenty-seven other clubs that we have is those are the staples and they've always been a part of what's offered to the middle schoolers here. But three years ago, when I came to the school committee, you know, I said, I think there's more that we should be offering, you know, before school, after school. And that's where the three sessions of the after-school programming came about. So if you ever pass one of the posters in the hallway, there's almost a line, there's all these clubs. And then there's a line that shares the clubs that kind of meet the whole year. Again, loosely based, National Junior Honor Society isn't really even a club, but, so there is that dichotomy. You know, the district is, if I was to go on record, supporting probably four or five. But I think we're, we're about, the PTO is anywhere between eighteen to twenty-two thousand dollars a year supporting the activities at the middle school.
And your teachers, is it all run by the teachers that are in your school?
Yes, we're very proud of that, extraordinarily proud of that. And I talked with a Shrewsbury principal just the other day. He was very proud of the fact that they have an open door policy for their parents and their parents come in and run all the clubs and activities. I just bit my tongue because I really see a tremendous value of, of the middle school teachers and staff. And it goes beyond the teachers. The head cook is, is the advisor to the cooking club. I have a custodian who may be entrusted, twisting his arm just a little, in doing some, some wood shop. I've had paraprofessionals do quilting, quilting clubs.
I just want to point out, in the budget, there were several, what I consider essential, things that were not included in this current year budget. So we do have in, in next year, the drama club, the history club, the literacy club, the math club, the National Junior Honor Society, the STEM club, student council, theater and yearbook. Those are all stipended positions that are in the budget, right? Because again, activities like this give students additional opportunities to learn. And the stipends are also spoken for in the contract, but there are supplemental other activities that are being run, you know, through the PTO and through, through Mr. Cameron. But we've got the essentials back in the budget where they should be. If we're going to have a national junior honor society, we shouldn't fund it. We should fund the budget. We've come to, we've come to that understanding. With that said, I guess, again, I started this by saying, you know, everything that we tried to present tonight tied back to student, what are the student learning needs? And what I'm really looking for with the committee is anything you heard tonight that you would say to me by consensus, let's build that in, all right? And then we can take a look at the bottom line, or is there something in there that you want more information on? So that we, we get a sense of where we want to go in terms of that. To recap, Mr. Doudak has really been speaking to a couple of personnel issues. You know, one, the world language department, we currently have two teachers that are overloading, so there's really a forty percent FTE for these teachers that are each taking on an extra class. Based on his numbers and, and his enrollment, it would make more sense to actually add a foreign language teacher to the budget. All right, given that we already have a point four in there, the net is a, is a point six, right? But right now, you know, I need a consensus. Is that something you want me to do?
The new money is the point six.
Correct, yeah, right, yeah. I need to, you know, just so we're all clear, it is, there would be a whole person hired. Right now, it doesn't look that way, but then when you factor in these two teachers that have volunteered to take on an extra class, they get a twenty percent bump by taking on the extra class. I think, you know, quite frankly, the investment should be is to create more opportunities for students based on the enrollment numbers in world language. Is there a sense that we should incorporate that? I'm not making a decision, but I just need to know, should I add the numbers?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see it built in, I'd like to see all these things built in and see what it looks like.
I don't see, I don't object to anything that was presented. Speaking of which, now, foreign language at, at this level, just Spanish or Spanish and French?
Just Spanish.
Just Spanish, okay. And then French in high school, okay. I would just like to have just some, some brainstorming with the idea of the media slash whatever, you know, you want to call that person, you know, just to, I'd love to hear. You know, and, and understand what the best practices are in some, maybe not the valley, but, you know, take a look around, you know, at districts that we would, you know, target as, I'm not saying need them, for districts that we, we would target as, as contemporary or.
And I'm in agreement with that. I just need some clarity over the athletic director, some of the questions that Michael had brought to light about the contractual issues and what that would look like and what needs to be done going further with that, but the rest is great.
Clearly, it's conversation that I would have to have with the president of the association, but why have that conversation if we're not going to move in a direction? My sense is, what we're saying is that, that the current forty, you know, eighty percent teaching load should be reduced to a forty percent teaching load to, to meet these learning needs that we've talked about, so.
And I think you presented that case well, yeah.
And then, you know, again, just by giving me consensus, that doesn't mean it's going to stay there because the ultimate.
It's January the twenty-third, you know, but I, I think we need to build, I applaud you for bringing this stuff forward. We need to build a educationally sound plan and we have to work towards that. So, so general public and watching this on TV, you know, this is a really, and thank you both for, all three of you, your, your presentation and your commitment.
Initially coming in here, I was ready to say, library media person, if it was just because of NIESK, I was ready to say, forget this. But the way you presented it makes a lot of sense and it's finding that person. For me, let's move forward and see what it looks like. And, and, you know, I, I personally would want to cut a teacher over here just to fund that too. And I don't think anyone there would want to do that either. I think we want to continue to move forward. So I think, for me, I think put it in and, and let's see what it looks like and, and move forward. I, I think it's not a matter of if we do it, it's a matter of when, I think, quite honestly. I think you both did a great job. I was looking for escalator follow-up video for you.
Oh, my apologies.
Maybe you could forward me something just to kind of wet my whistle.
I'll, I'll share the Google Doc of wonderful videos.
I'm all for moving forward with it. I just have a question on the point six foreign language and the, the point four phys ed and how can we, you know, use that, that time maybe towards the middle school as well? Or, or moving, you know, I don't know how many classes foreign language would have with that point, with that point six.
Again, we're currently teaching two additional classes at point four. This will add three classes in high school. And when Mr. Doudak presented that slide on the departments, if you notice in world language, even with those two additional sections, we have overload of world language with classes at twenty-eight. And we have, we have situations where students move up, you know, you get some attrition, but at the same time, you have to make that commitment that if you're going to do French, you better be prepared to do.
French four.
French four.
Yep.
So part of that, you know, is, is a commitment. That may be a lower number class or in Spanish, it may be a lower class number of kids, but you make that commitment that students are going to be able to have a sequence of classes to do, to do that. I, I think the connection, you know, as we're proposing it here, I just want to be clear, is not a, 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 a middle school enhancement. But I think the potential, you know, for that discussion in the future. But I think it is to meet the needs of the, of the world, of the world language. Because we have, most in our academic departments, we have four or five people, in world language, we have three. Three, and two of them are teaching an overload, so it really is the equivalent of three point four. But under, under the circumstances, this is one, this was one of the particular areas when I came here as superintendent in August, working with Maureen Tessier and, and Mr. Doudak. It was very obvious that as part of our schedule crunch was the backup in world language with the singletons.
And I definitely think it's definitely needed.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, you know, if, if there is that extra time or extra space after they do do those classes, it'd be good to connect or bridge that to the.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, certainly a good, you know, question to kind of, you know, move forward and think about. But, but the three additional sections, I think will, A, accomplish the, the large class sizes, the largest classes that we have at the high school in world language. And again, it's not all sections, but it's a couple to be, to be able to mitigate that and also, you know, to ensure that students have a sequence of courses in order to move it. And again, all we're committing to at this point is we're going to see what that looks like in the overall design of that. At the middle level, you heard Mr. Cameron say it's about commitment, but there really are not any physical additions at the middle school. We are revamping a special education program at the middle school. We're actually going to initiate this shortly, but we have a retirement of a special ed teacher, so it's a net. We're refocusing, but we have somebody retiring and we're going to, and we're going to restructure the program. But it doesn't result in a, in a new teacher. It's just taking advantage of a retirement and restructuring that, that position to do that. So at the middle school currently, now the only other shift to make you aware of, the ripple. We are going to be looking for a director of music and I'm prepared next week to put out an internal posting. week to put out an internal posting for a person that's currently employed in the district to apply for the high school position. All right? So, there will be a transition in music, it'll be an internal one, and we have a discussion of that candidate, but we will go through the process of posting for two weeks, but there will be a replacement if that posting in that position goes as we think it will to do that. All right? And at this point, those are the retirements and people that we know that are coming back and returning to us at this point, but that's always subject to change with some of our staff as we know it. You have detail, you know, and again, because they're here, did anybody circle something that they wanted more information on? Or, again, I would encourage you to look at it. If you have a question, please email it to me, and I'll be glad to ask Mr. Dudak or Mr. Cameron to give some additional background information. One piece in the line item budget that some of you probably noticed, past practice in budgeting, it looks like we spent no money in prior budgeting years, and you say, how could that be? There was advanced purchasing sometimes, so it's not like nothing was bought, but it was bought out of previous fiscal year monies. So, when you see a number, you're thinking, whoa, why is that up so much? And my commitment is transparency. You need to see it so you understand when Mr. Dudak and Mr. Cameron both talked about textbook and instructional supplies, that is a lifeblood in a school. There's got to be money for that, but we look a little funny when you look at the data and the budget, because it looks like in fiscal 13, we spent nothing, and in fiscal 14, we're spending a very small amount. In some cases, it was advanced purchasing, you know, living out of the pantry, if you will, to do certain things, and we're trying to bring that back so there's somewhat of a balance to it. And again, it's not that we weren't spending the money, but it was the way in which it was being done, you know, with the budgeted funds to deal with it. And all of the staff, again, is subject to change, but you should know who's getting paid out of those accounts, who's there, and that information is there for you as well. Any questions?
Thank you, guys. I mean, I know you said when you first came in, we haven't seen you in a while, but, you know, really, continue to do the great job that you're both doing, because you're both doing a great job.
Thanks.
Thanks. Appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Dudak talked about it, but the high school is going through its accreditation process, and there is that issue of the library media special on standard, and we received a letter from NIESC on that, so duly noted. The next item was just a summary, I mentioned this last meeting, not so, oh, yeah, this is the Millville Elementary School, went through a loss control review, and we were requested to provide additional information. This is the information that's being sent over to the board of selectmen and the executive secretary. The items noted, some of them are done, some of them, the kitchen floor, we need to have dialogue about the kitchen floor at Millville Elementary School. I sent the executive secretary a letter dated August, October 25th, saying, how do you want to proceed? I think the floor needs to be replaced, I don't think it's a repair. It's not a repair, it really needs to be replaced, and we have to dialogue, how are we going to afford that? You know, do you want to get a new quote? The last quote we had, it's over $25,000 to do it. We just need some clarity on that.
Have you had any response here?
I have not.
So, when you say dialogue in this room or with?
With the town of Millville.
We dialogue with him all the time.
Well, you know, we're not going to reach closure on this one, because quite frankly, you know, to me, it's not a, it's not a patch, it's a replace. And we, how do we get there in terms of funding? As I said, I sent this letter off October 25th to the executive secretary with copies to the Millville Board of Selectmen. So, the issue's out there, I just don't know, have not heard.
So, is it safe to say that this committee is supporting Dr. Davis's recommendation that it's not a patch? We should, the most cost-effective way to do it is to replace the whole floor. Is that safe to say, everybody?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, actually, I've seen it, and I agree totally with him. I was over there looking at it.
And I think even from Millville's perspective, they've always wanted the quality of that building to be kept up to, you know, the best standards as possible, so why would we even entertain a patch?
One second, is there other, these other ones are done, you said?
They're done. The only other one that I've asked in my report was the issue of the driveway in the parking lot. I'm asking the town, you know, to have their highway superintendent, highway department head come in, and I don't have, we have no expertise to determine how to fix it, whether it's a patch or whether it's a rip up and regr, I don't know. I mean, I would certainly ask Mr. Malali to come in and give us a recommendation of what the repairs would be.
Okay.
We have no capability to, we have no dry patch, no truck, I mean.
So, the hallway in the basketball?
The hallway, the police, the fire department said that's not a problem for them.
Okay.
The cable winch, backboard, that backboard has never been raised, but I've directed the head custodian to lock up the winch. You can't do that without a power drill. So, he has secured that in a closet, so nobody can ever do it. All right? If that were being winched up and down every day, I understand their issue in raising it, but the fact is, you know, that has never been moved since the school opened.
Is that good enough for Maya?
We'll see.
So, you're responding to all of these in terms of?
I was asked to respond to them, and this will go off to the executive secretary.
Oh, what about the oil, the drain?
The drain, the current water consultant, Northeast Water Solutions, is advising us on securing the plugs. So, we will, whatever they say to do, because, as you know, the water is a sensitive issue over there, so we need consultation. So, the head custodian has contacted Mr. Ferrari from Northeast Water Solutions to advise how we do that.
Okay.
And we'll do it, but I want to do it with their blessing and say, yeah, you're doing the right thing, take care of it.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that the elementary school is on the board of selectmen's agenda for February 3rd.
Oh.
And the finance committee will be there as well, and you're all welcome to come.
February 3rd? I didn't know that.
Oh, thank you.
To tour the building and take a look at that?
No.
You mean at the town hall?
Two things that are happening.
Okay.
At 10 o'clock in the morning, the water engineering firm will be there, Northeast Water.
At Millville Elementary School?
Millville Elementary. But board of selectmen meeting in the evening. We'll just bring up the elementary school.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you. The enrollment data, I got the report back from NESDEC on trying to break out the data by town. It only became fuzzier. It was fuzzy, now it's fuzzier. I talked to Dr. Kennedy, and I've included, you know, in this some of his comments, you know, about how he collects this data and what some of the nuance is of looking at that. What we both agree on is the real accurate data is the outreach that we're currently doing now. We have 22 kids according to the census. When I talked to Mrs. DeSey today, she had three other parents come forward who were not on the census that picked up kindergarten packets. It doesn't mean the 22 are necessarily going to enroll in kindergarten, because kindergarten can be an option, or in some cases, parents can decide with a late birthday, they're going to hold back. So, that is the best number, you know, to kind of look at at this point. But the birth data, you know, was fuzzier, didn't help us to do it in terms of the reporting of that data that they use. There's a lag. We're proximate to Rhode Island. He asked me about how many babies are born in Providence or other hospitals, because that would not come through the Mass Department of Public Health. I honestly don't know. You know, I've asked people that live in the area, and they said, yeah, some people do use, I said, women and infants? Right. So, but, you know, it's not like people say, oh, yeah, most people from Millville go there. I, you know, there's no indication of that, and there's no history to it. So, you know, I did it, but.
Well, there's a half a dozen between us.
What?
Rhode Island.
Yeah, but you see, that.
My son, we're one side.
But, and again, and that was a variable, you know, that does slow down the data push, but the data out of NESDEC, when he looked at that, you know, was much higher than we are projecting in terms of that, so.
I would think the census would be.
The census is generally the better, and then the outreach that she's doing now. So, as I said in the memo, probably by the end of February, we will have a more accurate sense of how many children can we expect to come into Millville kindergarten next year. All right?
The only thing I want to point out is that on this one, particularly towards Millville, it was pretty accurate for this year's. So, it was 26, and we had 25.
25.
25.
Right, it's good. It's just difficult.
But this is a big difference from the census.
Right.
40.
Correct.
Well, over the period of time that's charted, it's like a 15% decline, but I'm wondering how does that align to not only other school districts in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, but also population in both states, I believe, have declined over the same period? And I'm not sure what that number is, if it's 5% or 10%.
Yeah, they tie in, NESDEC uses the census data and looking at those trends, and, you know, there clearly is a decline in communities up and down the 495 corridor. You know, for the most part, anything up and down, you know, the 495 corridor is, communities are experiencing decline. Partially the economy, partially, you know, birth rate and the confluence of the two. The other variable that I have not been able, you asked me about, was the school choice impact, and I will try to have that for the February meeting. That data is a little more difficult than I thought it was going to be to track that down. And then, the other variable is homeschooling. You know, I forgot, we have a number of homeschoolers, so they can be on the census, but they're homeschooling to do that. Okay? The next one is just to kind of give you an update on what our spending is tracking for snowstorms through the beginning of January, and we did have another snow event this week, and we did incur some additional overtime. The one number that I don't have at this point is that we do buy our salt and sand through the Blackstone DPW, and that bill we've used quite a bit, because the events have been, you know, icy kind, so we've been using a lot of salt and sand, so we pay for that as well in terms of that. But our overtime costs, I think, have been very good as an effective way of utilizing our own equipment. We have three plows, one of them also has a sander on it, so we've been using our own staff to do that work. The petroleum bid we talked about and sent the letter off, you know, to the bidder, the current price, and it's in the data, you know, we're currently paying, I think, 3.12 for oil, so this is actually down, you know, about 10 cents in a fixed price for that. The next item I had presented, the draft calendar, I'm losing it. Did I give you that the last week?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, this is the first time? We have proposed a draft calendar for next year. As most of you know, contractually, we can't start before September 1st. Labor Day happens to be September 2nd, so it's our earliest start, and holding to the traditional winter, February and April vacations. The only change that the principals recommended was that when we start school that week of Labor Day, that we go with an orientation for the staff, followed by two professional development days. The rationale for that is the literacy initiative. We still have a need to kind of push on that, and that makes more sense to do it. And also, Mr. Dudak, he's getting, he's going to be in his second year of his NIESC, and it makes sense for him to do it, and Mr. Cameron thought, you know, he could accommodate that as well. It does mean in that first week, the children will be coming in on Friday and then having a weekend, but it is always going to be a first day. You know, whoever it is, there will be a first day to do it. The other recommendation was our third PD day was to build it around the Martin Luther King holiday, and what the principals are recommending is that we do PD on the Tuesday to the 20th. We looked at Friday the 16th or Tuesday the 20th. We'll be honest, the Friday has become a very popular one with many districts, and what that means is that a lot of consultants we might want to hire, that if you do it on the 20th, we'd have more opportunity to bring in consultants, because the Friday before has become very popular with districts and.
Can we also talk about that week?
Sure.
That's the week we're in right now, in essence.
Correct.
Anyway, the high school, they're doing midterm exams this week.
Yeah.
So, I'm looking, would that be?
Approximately the same time.
So, say Wednesday through Friday spilling into the next week? They typically need at least four days to get the exams in.
We're starting a little bit earlier than we did last year. Good question. Let me ask Mr. Dudak.
And the reason I ask it, again, we're in the middle of it this weekend, I've gotten some phone calls from some parents, because it's now, in essence, you go for your exams and you leave.
Yeah.
So, what that would be is a week of half-days coming after two days off.
At the high school.
Spilling into the following week.
Just at the high school.
At the high school.
Yeah.
They have made terms at the middle school, too.
But not half-days.
No.
Time and learning regulations only allow the high school to have release days for exams. You're allowed six, you know, so generally, and because we're on a semester schedule for some courses, you know, they, you know, call them mid-years and then finals, but let me, I'll have to follow up with Mr. Dudak and have him count the days.
Can you also look at that week in November, look at the 11th? So, we're out the 11th, and on the 12th, half-day on Thursday, 13th?
The 13th, the 13th is generally, yeah, November was a tough month. Parent-teacher conferences have traditionally been done. The choices would be to bump it up to the next week. With Thanksgiving, that's a tough month.
Yeah, it's a tough one, too.
It's a tough month. And that only, well, I shouldn't say that. That corresponds, that's the parent conference one that bumps up.
That's probably driven by report cards, I'd imagine.
Correct, yeah.
Now, are the report cards in the elementary, aren't they trimesters or?
Yes, but there's a traditional, you know, parent conference.
I know you probably have the high school and the middle schools impacted, too, but it's, you know. Some places have put the parent conferences in the elementary out to first week of December, maybe?
See, in elementary, where you don't even get report cards until the second week of December, so it's kind of in the middle of November, you kind of get a warning of what's coming, I guess.
So, is this kind of a first read?
But I would think on that, in that area, when you talk, think about that, wouldn't you want to have the follow-up, wouldn't you want to have the conference after you've seen the results of the first trimester? And that's historically why it was in November, because it was.
But middle school and high school are probably getting them in November, because they're on the quarters.
Why can't we modify when those fall? I know it may be a pain in the neck scheduling-wise, but is that language for the half-day?
I'm sorry?
Or is that just us being nice guys? Is that language that allows for the half-day?
The only contractual language in the contract is that the day before the winter break to.
And the day before Thanksgiving, too.
Well, the day before Thanksgiving is the law, but the day before the winter break is a half-day because of, because of those evening conferences.
Okay.
So, it's not the day that's contractual, it's just the time.
Why can't the elementary plan their conferences appropriately post the first term, and the high school and middle school?
Do it on the?
On their first term.
Do it at the end of their first term. I guess, why are we giving them the half-day? What's the, if we're not. What's the, if we're not contractually obligated?
Well, the, the reason, the reason for the half-day is that, that we have, we have conferences. Conferences are offered on the half-day.
Yeah, okay. But we're not, we're not under any obligation to do that, that way. We could do nights or afternoons or.
I think we've run, we've run pilot programs.
My understanding of past practice.
Yeah, Shephahut said they were coming during the day.
When we give them the half-day, we schedule parent conferences for people to come in who can't do nights.
Right.
To do that, okay?
I, I think the half-day is a good idea, I'm just.
What I'm hearing is maybe.
The week that it's falling because of the day off, a day and then a half-day. So if we can move it.
Well, you know, that, that language, when we did the half-days, was when the elementary did quarters.
Right.
That ended probably, I don't know, six or eight years ago.
I, I think it'd make sense as a teacher too, you're giving a conference and then you're going to be piling up with conferences again.
I don't think there's a problem, you know, having a secondary half-day where the elementary would stay in session for the whole day. And the elementary would get a half-day. I don't, I don't personally know of any problem, but let me take that back to the principals.
If you get a bus home, whatever.
Right, we're paying, we're paying for the bus runs, it's just, no, I don't see a busing problem. But, you know, to your point.
The administrators.
To your point, oh, let me, let me do that.
See how the teachers feel about the conference being before the report card.
And then, you know, would we do the, the JFK, AFM and Millville Elementary at another day? That doesn't impact the high school. Just have to ask the question. So let me explore that and I'll get back to you.
Has conferences ever been, at least at the middle school level, later, like January?
Don't know.
Because I always think it's too quick, November. You want to have it halfway through the year. Well, but you have a, you have a really good, the teacher has a really good picture of the student for the half-year. And then how you can plan the second half. I mean, you don't have to do anything, I'm just talking a lot.
That's okay.
I think it's worth a question to ask administrators, what, what, how do they, how do they feel about the conferences that are set up? I mean, I didn't even realize that it was quarters and that's why that's in, because ours is really early, but.
I mean, the reality is, it's five minutes, it's five or 10 minutes.
The reality is, it's not long enough.
It's not long, it's, you know, it's not.
I think it's worth the question.
So I will follow up and ask if the conference day, we could do a secondary one in November and possibly do the elementary one closer, closer to the report card. Okay? Okay? And, any other questions on that? I've had, I've had some inquiries from parents asking already about, and I told them we're following the traditional calendar, so there's no question here about the traditional winter break, February break and spring. I mean, it, you actually have contract language with your teachers that you couldn't change that unilaterally, okay?
And the reason we wouldn't open on the second on January is that because of heating costs? That January second. I mean, I, I was thinking, I'm like, maybe it's just, it's not worth opening up for that day just for heating.
Right.
Is that, am I close to being?
You know, I.
It'd be close for two weeks, open it for a day, shut it for two days.
We're going to be open a day and a half on the front end. We're going to do the twenty-second and a half day and the twenty-third.
Right.
You know, and the second, you know, it just, it's a plug.
Yeah.
Yep.
Makes sense.
It's a plug. The discussion we had around it.
The reverse of what we had this, we ended on a Friday and not.
Right, and then we came back, the two days. We came back one and had a snow day, so.
That's right.
In any event, you know, trying to, trying to get, and that still, at this point, keeps us, you know, to the nineteenth and then, you know, we still have the five snow days built in plus two extras if we need it.
Roof days, we used to call them.
I'm sorry?
We used to call them roof days.
Roof day, oh, okay.
Inside joke. We'll need those next year.
Maybe.
So I will bring this back to your meeting. We're meeting next week, but that's strictly a budget meeting, so it would be the first meeting in February, okay? The next item I have is, I had told you about the water damage that we had at the middle school. You toured it a while ago. This is just a recap from our insurance company. The total on that repair was twenty-four thousand, four twenty-one seventy-two. The insurance company, we have a deductible of twenty-five hundred. So the net claim that the insurance, they're going to pay twenty-one thousand, nine twenty-one seventy-two. And they will bill us for the twenty-five hundred on the deductible. So that's why you carry insurance, to take care of that. And it went, it went, it was tragic that it happened, but we were able to get it repaired. Didn't put a stress on everything. The next item, when we discussed the cafeteria revolving account last week, our last meeting, about what were some of the expenses that the cafeteria budget was carrying. What I've done is the insurance, health insurance cost, the benefits cost for the current employees in the cafeteria, sixty-two thousand, two thirty-four that she has to carry as an expense. Then there's the issue of these cafeteria aides, the monitors, who do not serve food, who are there just to monitor the cafeteria while the students are eating. I told you that at Millville, we had a person leave, one of the cafeteria monitors went in to be a cafeteria worker. We didn't replace that, so we're down one, from two to one. But we currently, and this was done last year, there used to be one in each caf, there were a total of three, and it was changed to two. So at JFK and AFM, we have two in JFK caf and two in AFM. Round numbers, you know, that's costing that program twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. So there's eighty-five thousand dollars of charges that we're trying to say the cafeteria has to assume in addition to food and labor for that, for the, and that's one of the reasons that Jean is projecting, you know, that she's, she's not going to make it with these overhead charges. She has spent, you know, her balance and she continues to have repair needs to do it. So I'm suggesting that I move the cost of the cafeteria monitors to the operating budget and in conversation with the principals, to go at JFK and AFM back to one. So that they're only three rather than six. But it was not in your budget, so it really now, so round numbers, we're going to probably add about twelve thousand dollars to the budget. But to expect the cafeteria to pay for that, the options are, we're going to have to raise the price of lunch to, to cover this coverage. And as I said, the, this, this is not, in my, in my opinion, a direct food service cost. All right?
Agreed.
So.
Probably shouldn't have been in there to begin with.
Excuse me, is it worth getting numbers? I know last year we talked about this, but is it worth getting numbers of what the volume would be? So when they reduce to one, does that mean they're just going to have one in there?
There'll be one monitor and as well as, in most cases, there's a custodian in there. And in most cases, either an assistant principal or the principal poking their heads in there as well.
Or is there, is there an aide in there as well?
No.
No.
Well, there will be aides in there that, that are with children with special needs who need assistance. So in terms of adults, just so you don't, you know, in terms of adults in the, in the cafeteria, there are generally two to three adults. One of them would be the monitor and the others could be either a teaching, a aide that's in there with other children. Or it could, it could be, you know, a principal or assistant principal, depending on the school, as, as well as a custodian. All right? I've been to all three cafeterias, all right? The children are well-behaved. You know, yes, the noise gets up a little bit, but I've watched, you know, the, John Staple can just do his thing and the noise comes down. I've watched Mrs. Desai do her thing and the noise comes down in, in terms of that. Not at the, this is, this is elementary cap.
Right.
I mean.
And school behaviors and expectations.
And I, you know, I've been in all the cafeterias when they're, you know, when school's in session and I'm, I'm amazed. You know, I mean, you know, Mr. Cameron has a, has a, an assistant principal and, you know, staff roaming. The biggest issue is kids want to talk and the volume goes up, but you can, you can deal with that. The high school, you know, the custodians in there, generally, Mr. Duchamp is around in there. And, you know, things work fine. Things work, work well. The beauty that we have in our cafeterias is that they're all spacious, so kids are not sitting one on top of the other. The middle, the Millville Elementary Cafeteria, you know, there's, there's, you know, probably thirty percent of the seats aren't being used on a given lunch. So kids sit by choice, by their, by their grade and their class. But the reality is, there's plenty of room to separate kids when they're nudgy. You know, kids aren't, and being, you know, don't have to be, and the same is true. Probably the largest lunch that I see is at the middle school cafeteria. But it's nicely spaced, that, you know, the combination of tables in there, the round ones. And the, the food ser, food, food service flow works in terms, in terms of that.
I think there's teachers in the middle school?
Yeah.
Not, because we don't have the monitors?
No, the only, the only, the only place we pay for monitors is at the elementary, the two elementaries.
So I know this is all contractual, if, but if, if we were talking about teacher duties. How many teachers do you think we'd have in each cafeteria on the elementary level?
Well, see, that's, that's.
Would it be based on the need or would it be based on how many teachers need to do duties? So, I, I mean, but you said you've been into all of them. So in your opinion, how many teachers would, would it be one?
One.
It would be one?
Yeah.
One per lunch.
Right. The issue is making sure that you have adults. And when you have, your, your custodians are not shy, you know, they, they're around. And they're respected by the kids. And I think they, they bring a, a sense of presence in the, in the room, in the cafeteria. And it shows, it shows. I mean, you know, the kids are very respectful at the high school kids, there's no, when lunch is over, there's no trash left on the tables. And it's, you know, they're out of respect for Mr. Duchamp being there and Mr. Bacon. I mean, the culture, it's not.
I think the discussion that we had was recess duty versus lunch duty.
Right.
There was, there was, there was that combination of it. I, you know, you know how I feel, so.
I, I still have a good.
It's just a huge expense to, to expect the cafeteria to absorb it and.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I do, I do understand that the cafeteria shouldn't absorb it, but I, I still think even though there are bodies in there, those bodies have jobs. Janitor does what he needs to do, the one-on-one, has to do with the one-on-one. And, and so we have that one person that's solely responsible for, let's say, a hundred kids. So although there are bodies and, and coming and going, you know, all it takes is that one time for something to happen, something to go wrong, and it is a concern, you know, I'm just putting it out there that I'm concerned with one person being, you know, solely responsible for a hundred kids, although there are, there are adults in the room.
You have, you have two in the AFM and two in the JFK. The AFM room is much smaller than the JFK.
And I'm not looking at, I don't think I'm looking at, at size. I'm looking at, you know, all, one child choking and, and somebody emptying the trash and somebody taking, you know, all it takes is just one, one.
One monitor makes sense.
Correct.
Again, the cafeterias, the proximity, the office for the principal and assistant principal and other support staff, the nurse, is directly across from the cafeterias at that building. Directly across, not down the hall, directly across. The, the, the Millville, you know, elementary, the principals literally just around the corner from that. And, so I, I, I think the proximity of other adults and certainly, we know, we know much more today about children that come in with allergies and, and symptoms. The cafeteria staff that's, you know, they know who these kids are. So the cashier, they know, and we train them to be responsive to that. So I, I just want to be clear, I, 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 I think having one person in there as an assigned monitor, given the other adults that are in and out of the room, and given the behavior that I've observed, you know, I just don't, I don't, you had it before, I, in talking to the principals, I can't, I can't, you know, hear from them that this is an absolute critical need, you know, to have, in the case of JFK and AFM, four people. And you know, the, you know, the kitchen is here and the calves are on either side. So, you know, the proximity of a problem, you know, the ability, the ability to summon help, the main office, that is, is directly across the hall, you know, kind of a situation. And again, medically fragile children or children that are on IEPs with one-on-one aides, very often, those folks are, you know, in the cafeteria, you know, with those children, all right?
Are there, is it just something else that maybe we could ask the administrators to look at? Are there any other adults in the building that could be utilized that wouldn't be a contractual?
Sure.
Thing?
Absolutely.
Just so we could try to keep that.
One of the things that I'm told.
One to fifty ratio, or that, whatever.
We have permanent subs in each building, on any given day.
Right.
They're not all being utilized, which is good. And that person is generally asked to pick up in one of the areas. Now, but you can't say on a given day, all three of them might be tied up subbing. But we have flexibility with some adults, you know, to do that.
If that could just be looked at, I would.
Sure.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think, to my point, I think it's just important to have two people that are there. Whether it's the vice principal and the aide, I, I think it's important to not, you know, the other people have their jobs to do, but to have two people overseeing, whatever the situation is overseeing. It could be, it could be, it doesn't have to be two aides. I think my point is just that there's two people in there.
I would, I would respectfully disagree because I, I would be hard-pressed, permanently assign an administrator to cafeteria duty that would tie up my principal and assistant at JFK and AFM for over an hour and a half.
Well, I'm not, I'm not just saying principal or vice principal, I'm just saying two, two bodies.
I understand.
Whatever the bodies are, it, you know, or whatever, you know, that's my concern.
I will look into it. The high school, Mr. Duchamp does spend quite a bit of time. But in all fairness, when you're the assistant principal who does discipline, it's a wonderful way to see everybody in the short period of time and make connections and communicate and deal with it. So it's productive, you know, amount of time. So I'm, I'm, I've had the experience of being an assistant principal at high school and, you know, that lends itself, you know, tremendously to the work that an assistant principal does with the, with the student body. At the, at the elementary level, I hear your issue and let me bring it back to the principal, all right? But I would recommend that we drop back in this, we heard presentations and I, do we want to spend twenty-three thousand dollars? Or do we want to spend twelve and have twelve to do something else? In terms of, in terms of where we are. But I hear the issue and let me take it back to the elementary principals and, and see, you know, what, what, what the, you know, what the coverage could be. The other item, and I, I just learned this, I didn't get it in the packet. The question was asked about the raise for Jean Sheridan. She did not receive a raise on July one. I was in error when I said that the, Bellingham gave her a three percent raise, that's the partner for that position. Monique was the one that it was covered. And it was, how did I learn that, from you or Donna, that Jean didn't get a raise? Donna, I'd asked.
I knew it was discussed, but I, that was it.
Well, the, the fact is, on July one, she received a raise. So I was in error.
From us.
From us. She got a raise from Bellingham, but not us. I would respectfully ask this committee to consider tonight, the, the teacher contract raise has been one and a half percent. I don't think you treat somebody, you know, that's doing a heck of a job and we just kind of didn't want to go with Bell, which is your prerogative, you are contractually not bound to follow them, all right, on that, on that raise. But giving nothing, I'm not sure that was the committee's intent.
I don't think it was the committee's intent, I think the question was, you know, that was negotiated in, in Bellingham. However, having said that, the number that you just mentioned was not the same number that was portrayed to the, to the committee some time ago.
The what?
What did you say?
One and a half?
Three.
What did, what did Bellingham give?
A three.
No, there was something higher than that, that was.
Didn't they say it was like five or something?
Yeah, I mean, that was, was brought back here and then we.
It was before you got in.
Oh, okay. I, I met with Jean and Jean shared with me that she got a three percent raise in, in Bellingham and no raise for her, you know, it's a fifty-five, forty-five split, you know, so she got nothing here.
Are you suggesting we do, look at this for July one? Are you saying we should give it retroactive and?
I, I think, I, I'm putting to the committee, I didn't think you had made a decision, no raise. I thought you had decided you wouldn't do three, but it didn't imply that you were doing nothing.
I don't think we decided we wouldn't do three, I think we decided, I think there was no action taken at all, so. It was like one of those, oh, by the way.
Okay.
And nothing really went to that. So I, I have no problem with, and I think she should be retro to.
Do we have a dollar figure? Was one-half translate to, for dollars?
I honestly don't have that number in front of me.
It's nothing.
Could you get that for us?
Yeah. I don't care.
It's not large.
Right. I mean, it's this late coming, we run us away to the next meeting.
If you want me to bring it back next week, I'll be, I'll bring it back next week.
Sure, it's retroactive anyway.
Let a dollar figure that.
Sure, yeah.
Well, I don't see myself finding.
We can probably do it now, too.
If you wanna see it, I, I just, as I said, I, I met with her, I met with her on Tuesday. So, and I just got this information and I was like appalled. And when I went to Donna, we checked and no, she's not, she got no raise.
So you're recommending that we look at a one and a half percent raise as the teachers?
The, the, the base raise, if you will, has been, you know, that you have the teachers.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Sherman, to approve the one and a half percent raise for the food services director, of which we pay forty-five percent of her salary. And it'd be retroactive to one July.
Okay, motion is made by Mr. Buckley. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Robin, any discussion? No discussion? Okay?
Thank you.
So, we didn't vote yet.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor, so we might say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, retentions? Okay, unanimous.
I'm sorry, I just was thinking it wasn't on the agenda with the.
The cafeteria revolving account was?
But it's, it's.
It's reasonably anticipated.
The cafeteria revolving account was. The item was on.
Now, the request for the.
Because again, the raise comes out of the revolving account.
That's not on the agenda.
And that's not getting out of the.
Not getting out of the agenda.
Just, just the question, the, the raise comes out of the revolving account.
Yeah.
So not a, it's not a operating budget item, all right? But I will bring that.
She probably, right now, she may be the longest-serving, if you wanna call that administrator in the, in, in the district.
Should've warned us, she made us money.
Yeah, one.
Made us money for a while.
Oh, I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
You mentioned in the last meeting that there was some machines or dishwashers or things that aren't used in, in the buildings.
As much.
As mu, oh, they're not, oh, all right. I wasn't sure if they weren't used at all, if, if they could be sold for, I mean, they're a lot, I'm sure they're. Just putting it out there.
Yeah.
Sale?
Well, there's a lot of equipment in this.
I think the punch list, the facilities, I think it's, it's a good point you're making because as we go through.
I mean, the amount of money that I'm sure those things haven't been even touched.
And we could fund our repairs on the other.
I don't think they have any real value, other than scrap. And then you'd have to pay a plumber to come in and disconnect and pull them out.
It's a profit.
It's something to look at, but the, these are not pick-up-and-go items. These are built-in fixture items. You know, their value is probably the scrap stainless steel. But, you know, the reality, the reality is they'd have, we'd have to pay an electrician or a plumber to come in and disconnect.
It costs you more than.
And dispose.
Than a scrap and net. And the other, put things in perspective, this is, we're sitting in a newest building, which is in its eleventh year. So even if the thing is brand-new pristine, it's probably, you know, probably functionally obsolete or of little value. But if you want to sink.
And then it, it's a good, don't lose that.
I was just thinking, I didn't know the amount of equipment, but I remember it was being brought up. So, you know, if that could've paid for some of the repairs or, you know, just brainstorming, but.
That's a good, that's a good first one.
Good job.
Just throwing it out there.
I only can tell you from my experience, one time I thought, getting rid of something, until I realized it cost me almost seven hundred and fifty dollars to pay an electrician and a plumber to come in and disconnect it. And cap it.
Is that your condo?
No.
Okay. Are you good?
I'm good.
All right, so we're moving on to subcommittee reports. Superintendent Search, the.
We have, we were snowed out. So we did not have our meeting. We're having the first meeting tomorrow. And then we'll schedule another one for the following week. Talking with Nezdek, they, he assured me that we weren't gonna, getting behind by canceling the meetings.
We're not getting behind.
We're not getting behind.
Good.
He said he, he didn't, he thought actually it would work out better because we'll have the weekend, the committee will have the weekend to review applications instead of trying to do it in the middle of the week and coming back for another meeting same week.
Do we know how many people applied?
I think it's twenty-four.
Twenty-four was the word from Nezdek, yeah? Which is great.
It's a good number.
He said he thought we had some good candidates.
It's a good number. Strategic planning? Hold on.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Policy review, regional agreement?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Public relations, we did set the dates for the tours. Is that gonna be discussed with the leadership team in terms of them being present during those sad days?
What, what dates?
The first two sad days in March.
First and eighth of March?
First and eighth. The first would be the elementary schools, eighth would be middle school and high school. And we can work out bugs. If, if they could be here to kinda lead the tour, that, that would be great.
Can we have it, like, do some kind of, it doesn't have to be videotaped that day, but maybe if we could do some kind of program to put on cable?
Well, I think we should videotape it during that day.
I'm just saying it would, you know.
People that can't make it. I mean, I'd rather have people there alive.
I will talk to Jesse.
Was that every building? Or just the elementaries?
One day is gonna be the elementaries.
Okay.
The next fall, Saturday would be the middle school and the high school.
Did we set a time?
Not real, I mean, we can, we can work that out, but I think, I think at this point, the month of February, we'll just start advertising it, you know, once we, once we do that.
January first.
I will talk to the.
Budget Subcommittee, we met last week. We had a good discussion in terms of just some of the initial numbers and talking about, we did talk about, and kinda I think we agreed that, which I don't know why we don't do, but taking the show on the road and having some meetings in Millville.
We have in the past, we've gone and had a meeting in Millville.
Yeah.
And I think we went down to the, I think we went to JFK one time.
We're in the high school library a couple of times.
Went to the light.
Had the meeting?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think we should just, I think we should do that three, four times a year anyway, so. And at the, at the school, you know? So I think planning that maybe for the month.
Would we, would there be a difficulty with live being?
I think we just get a, Millville wouldn't. It would, wouldn't, it would be live for Blackstone through the, through the internet.
Oh, right, right.
But then it would be live in Millville, I believe.
Yeah, they can do it.
Not Channel Eight.
Right, Joe?
In, in Blackstone, yeah.
Mr. Cable Man, right? It's one of your hats, green, green hat, selectmen. Anything else that I missed out?
The library even.
A high school?
Yeah.
I'll have to coordinate that with Jesse.
Yeah, 'cause we've done it.
I mean, I think if we can get a couple of meetings before April in Millville, I think that's, that's particularly around.
We're looking at setting our next year's meetings. We should probably do.
You should just set it, but I think for this year, I think, I think one of our meetings in maybe the end of April, February or beginning of March needs to be in Millville. That's mine, I. Okay.
Closer for us.
I have some more, I have some more stuff on the budget.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, chapter seventy preliminary numbers are out from the governor's house two. Chapter seventy-eight looks like it's increased by forty-six thousand nine seventy-five. In Governor Patrick's budget, he's allowed for twenty-five dollars additional per pupil guaranteed across all districts. That was our change. We are about, our enrollment is down thirty-five people, kids, which is a reduction of just under two percent. The required contribution from both towns is, has increased by about a hundred thousand. And our net school spending, required net school spending is up just about one percent of a hundred and forty-nine thousand. These are all preliminary. The change from the, from each town is, round figures, it's about seventy, thirty. Seventy K to Millville, thirty K to Blackstone. Blackstone is, pretty much has met their foundation number. That's why that they've, this hasn't increased as much. Millville is still about five point, according to, to the documents, about five point one percent under what their, that, that magical number that they established in two thousand and seven would be. So these are all very preliminary. Obviously, the common, obviously, you know, this won't really take effect, but at least we have a, a benchmark of where we're gonna start. Talked with the superintendent here a few minutes ago. I don't think we found regional transportation, but I would assume it would be very close to what regional transportation is.
The line item actually in the budget is level funded, which means we'll get less because there are a couple of new regions.
There are a couple.
And everybody's new, everybody's numbers will go up. So yes, even though it's level funded, level funding doesn't mean you're gonna get the same amount of money you got this year.
I also noticed that, as I was looking through some of the bills that are not enacted, but that are proposed, and one of them was from this, Representative Gobi from Spencer, was to like, you know, new regional aid to new regions. And the only thing I'd like to remind them is that, okay, what about the rest of us? That have been doing this for a long time, we're kinda like the step, the redheaded stepchild, unfortunately, sometimes, so. That's it for, at this point in time, and these numbers will certainly change a little bit, but you know where you're going.
And Mike kinda put a packet together for the budget Subcommittee, but we could make, we could probably give that to everybody.
Yep. I'll send you a link to it.
Looks like this. It's about five or six pages, breaks down each town, required contributions, it's really good.
What, what I'd suggest is that next week, 'cause we're gonna have a special meeting, that we do a chapter seventy review with everybody. And Mr. Buckley will email me that material and I'll make sure everybody gets it. And then, again, the good news is, you know, the governor's budget did not reduce circuit breaker, it didn't reduce regional transportation aid, they're level funded. So we're not looking at any dramatic decreases. We'll have some perhaps, but, you know, all in all, this budget, other than all we qualify is the twenty-five dollars per pupil increase, which is almost offset by the fact that we lost thirty-five kids, therefore it's a net.
Okay. Facilities, we're still, we're going along. Public forum. Committee forum.
Nothing new today, sorry.
You have to apologize, Mike?
No, I think I've pretty much covered it.
I just wanna mention that, get an email from Mr. McCourt that they're going to be hosting the student council, the Massachusetts Student Council event up here.
The second year in a row, I think.
Again, last year was somewhere else, but two years ago it was here. And they had about, I think they had about three hundred kids here, so.
They were the, they were the top council last year?
Yeah, and I think that's why they're back here again. So that's good news and that's gonna be on Friday, March fourteenth. Here, so that's good to hear. Go ahead.
Nope, I'm all set.
I'll let, I'll, I'll give it to one. She brought it up. The soup.
Empty bowl.
Empty bowl? I just don't know when it is. I, I know it's coming up though because I did just see.
February twelfth?
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
Actually, come back to me.
Okay, go ahead.
Last year, we did go to the basketball game for the, it was like the district finals or something like that. And maybe as a committee again, we can try to hit the exciting basketball game. I don't know how their season's doing.
They're doing good. They're, they're having a good year, so.
That's great.
I would just wonder if we could have reserved seating, 'cause it was loaded when we got there, remember?
Oh, yeah.
I'm kidding, I'll stay.
Do I sit on the bench?
No.
A little VIP, a little couch.
Right.
Go over real well, with the public. We all walk in with, you know.
That's a skybox.
That's true. Wendy, you good?
Yeah, I was just looking for the information. I, I can't find.
On empty bowl?
The twelve sounds good, so I was thinking the two.
Yeah, on occasion, in fact, when it, when it matched up a couple of years ago, we actually went before we went to. Our meeting was over there, but I don't think, I don't, I think it's a Wednesday this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday night, yeah.
Change our meeting to Wednesday night?
It'll be the next night.
And I'm good, too. I know we went over a lot of this information tonight and we'll continue to do it next week in terms of budget and really want to emphasize to the public that we're really in a preliminary stage and informational stage. And as we move forward, we'll hopefully, more people will be here. And I wanna mention for, Tom Millville's having a special town meeting on the twenty-fourth to review the warrant article regarding their roof debt. So that's gonna be on the twenty-fourth. I know there'll be members.
Is that the meeting or is that the?
That's the. Special town meeting, that's the.
The hearing will be the week before, though.
Hearing will be the week before. Actually, I think the FinCom is having, they're doing a combination of FinCom and public hearing for that then, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, the week before.
The week before, the Wednesday before.
Yes. Which is that sixty-day window that they're choosing to have a special town meeting within.[1656.61]